Good evening. This special meeting of the Board of Trustees of SCORISD is being called to order on February 24th, 2020. The time is 5:30. If y'all will all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Item number 3A, new business, consider approval of proclamation for National School Breakfast Week, March 2nd through 6th, 2020. Presenter is Ms. Aggie Reyes.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. I am Aggie Reyes, Coordinator of Child Nutrition Services. I am proud to stand before you today to represent the CNS Department and tell you of the great things that are happening with our school breakfast program throughout this district and the proclamation week, March 2nd through March 6th. There are many benefits to our students from eating a healthy breakfast. National studies have shown that students who eat breakfast have better attention and memory. Students who participate in school breakfast show improved attendance, behavior, and standardized achievement test scores, as well as decreased hardiness. Students who eat school breakfast attend on average 1.5 more days of school per year and score 17.5% higher on standardized math tests. Low-income children who receive school breakfast do better on a variety of indicators than low-income peers who go without breakfast. Socorro's School Breakfast Program is a model in the region and throughout the state, providing healthy, free breakfast for all students. We have breakfast in the classroom from our pre-K through eighth-grade students and universal free breakfast served in our dining rooms and portable sites at our high schools. They include second chance breakfast at participating high schools that serve students after the first bell. For students that cannot get their breakfast before the first bell because they're in band, football, etc. Our breakfast menus include fresh fruits, whole grains, no trans fats, fat-free dairy milk, and dairy-free options, lean protein. Our menu this year was designed with student favorites to include sausage roll and yogurt. At our high schools this year, we offer eight different choices daily, and on Wednesdays we offer fresh-made omelets. That are a student favorite now. Child Nutrition Services with an annual budget of over 32 million, which employs 361 SISD employees and 274 agency employees, makes a huge impact on the community and our students. CNS serves approximately 28,500 breakfast meals to children every school day. As of today, CNS has served 3,381,431 breakfasts, breakfast meals this school year. The National School Breakfast Week 2020 campaign encourages everyone to express support for School Breakfast Week and spotlight school breakfast. Whereas the School Breakfast Program has served our nation admirably since it was permanently established in 1975, and whereas the School Breakfast Program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nation's children, and whereas the School Breakfast Program joins and has been joined throughout the years by many other excellent child nutrition programs, and whereas there is evidence of continued need for nutrition education and awareness of the value of school nutrition programs, we ask for administrative approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Mr. Gandada and a second by Mr. Morales. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Reyes.
Thank you.
Item 3B, consider approval of pre-kindergarten partnership services. Ms. Zapata?
Yes. Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. At the last board meeting, I gave a report on our early education expansion for 2021 along with the requirements for House Bill 3 as it pertains to pre-K. Tonight, Mr. Sam Garcia is here to present the outcomes of this solicitation process regarding our partnerships with high-quality childcare providers and Head Start programs.
Good afternoon, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Agenda item 3B, consideration approval for pre-kindergarten partnership services under RFP E2036. This is a new solicitation to comply with House Bill 3. Administration is recommending two vendors for a three-year award for Region 19 Educational Service Center Head Start and the YWCA El Paso del Norte region. Questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gandada and a second by Mr. Garcia. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you. Item 3C, consider approval of House Bill 3 waiver for full-day pre-kindergarten. Ms. Zapata?
Yes. Good evening again, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. Administration requests approval for the submission of a waiver as it pertains to the pre-kindergarten component of House Bill 3 in accordance to Texas Education Code 29.153.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gandada and a second by Mr. Men. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Zapata. Item 3D, consider approval of purchasing cooperative Region 19 allied states cooperative. Mr. Carmona.
Good evening, Board President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. We're here today to provide some information in regard to the malpractice insurance and a cooperative with Region 19. As you might already know or recall, a physician has been hired for the soon-to-open employee health clinic, and a coverage that's needed for the clinic as professional liability is for malpractice, the coverage will be utilized in case of, you know, an incident and when it comes to whether it's care provided to a patient and during the service and the operation of the clinic. Mr. Garcia has some additional information in terms of the cooperative with Region 19?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Carmona. So, one additional item that we would also like to add to this agenda, it's listed there as a note, is that we would also like permission for future premiums as we continue to hire these professional individuals. I believe that last board meeting, you all approved a position for a physician assistant?
Nurse practitioner.
Or nurse practitioner, I'm sorry. So, as we start hiring them allows the opportunity to update our premiums because the premiums are based on each individual hire. So, it's not as a district, it's based on the physicians or PAs or licensing. And so currently, this will cover the current staff at $9,960. And so the other agenda item we're asking for is that request approval for future premiums as needed when we hire the upcoming individuals. Now, we understand that they do, some of them must provide 30 days, 60-day notices depending on when they're, where they are hired.
Okay, Mr. Garcia, the $9,960 that covers whom? Because you're saying additional premiums for additional staff.
So, that will be for the primary care physician at the clinic, and then as soon as additional staff is hired, in this case, we're referring to the physician assistant, even though this person is a mid-level practitioner, also requires to be insured. So, even though this person will be considered mid-level, most likely the company, whomever is insuring the person, will add an additional premium to it.
Okay, but I don't, do you know how much this additional premium will be?
Well, certainly, the primary was 9,900. It could range, we did receive quotes, the highest quote was $25,000, and of course, we didn't accept that. We, so any additional individual, it could range anywhere from 5,000 up to another $9,960.
Okay.
President Nahara?
Mr. Getta?
Mr. Carmona and Mr. Garcia, you're saying that right now at the moment is 9,960, but you want us to go ahead and approve for an additional?
So, if, once we bring in additional staff that will be providing care under the license of Dr. Nevades, that person will need to be insured as well. So, in this case, the extra, I guess, practitioner that's going to be brought over on board is a physician assistant. So, the person will be operating under Dr. Nevades's license, that person needs to have coverage.
Correct, but at the moment right now, we're approving the 9,960, with additional, when a new person comes in, you want us to add the premium also? We don't know the dollar amount yet, correct?
We don't, and like Mr. Garcia mentioned, we did request quotes already, so most likely that information will be brought over to the board once we have that.
But that's not going to be approved today, the second part? Okay, okay. That's why I'm sure.
Yeah, I thought you wanted us to approve additional premiums.
That's what I understood too.
So, and as a matter of fact, I am requesting for that additional approval myself so that when that person gets hired, they're able to act, or else that individual will have to wait until we get the insurance coverage for them. So, they would have to wait.
I wouldn't feel comfortable, Mr. Garcia, I wouldn't feel comfortable. I would wait, Ms. Nahara, I would wait till we get the additional premiums, what the cost is? Because you're saying 1,000 is 15,000, it might be lower. I wouldn't feel comfortable until we get that premium and we hire that person, and then we know exactly the amount.
So, if I can restate, the request is to approve the malpractice coverage for $9,160 to cover our current staff.
Yes, sir.
In place.
Yes, I agree with Mr. Getta because with the way the motion is written, it doesn't, and the item doesn't include additional staff, and so I would feel more comfortable if we brought it back as another agenda item at a future meeting. Okay? Yes, sir, Mr. Morales.
Sam, or Mr. Garcia, I'm sorry. Quickly, you're asking for us to approve something, an employee that needs to have this liability insurance, correct?
Correct.
Could you give us a reason why we would consider that, knowing that that person has hasn't been hired yet?
Well, as I restated, the current coverage, the $9,160 is to cover our primary physician, and I restated that that would be the request that we are going to be making.
Okay, but I was questioning the other part of that, I just wanted to get clarification.
So, my approach with that was that if we hire someone, that person cannot do any kind of activities without having that insurance in place.
And how quick would it be to get that person insured? I mean, what's the timeline?
We can request depending, it takes about a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks? Okay. I'm just curious, thank you.
I'm sorry, what takes a couple of weeks?
To send in an application for a new hire that falls within the nurse practitioner or physician assistant, so that they can run it through the insurance companies to request premiums.
Okay, because we did just hire a nurse practitioner, so has that process started yet?
If I may, just to elaborate on that, Ms. Nahara, it's a physician assistant?
No, this Tuesday?
The person that was recommended is a physician assistant.
Ms. Lopez?
Yes.
I'm sorry, it was a?
She's a PA.
A PA?
Yes.
A physician's assistant, okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's quite all right. There is a nurse on staff already who is the clinic manager, Ms. Kelly Moreno, she is a nurse, but the person recommended last board meeting was, is a physician assistant.
And is she covered?
No, she's not covered. She has typically, this type of professions have coverage with their current employer. So, once she goes through the hiring process, she'll turn in a 30-day notice with her current employer, and then we like to think that as soon as they start employment with us, with the clinic here at the school district, their coverage, their liability insurance will start that same day. If it doesn't, then the person may not practice as a medic.
But we have time.
Oh, yes, yes.
Is my point, that we have time to get them covered.
Yeah, we can start the process, absolutely, yes.
Okay, so we will have time to get them covered by time that we're expected to start, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gandada and a second by Mr. Getta. Is there any further, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you. Item 3E, consider approval of inter-local contract with Mesquite ISD Cardinal Health Incorporated. Mr. Carmona?
Good evening, Board President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. This item is also related to the employee health clinic. We have been working with Mesquite ISD and an interlocal agreement to be able to take advantage of the benefits that they're getting through the supply and providing all the necessary tools that are needed at the pharmacy. So, we have already received some information from Mesquite's purchasing department. We are currently working with the RIP from Cardinal as well, Dr. Garcia has been working with them directly, and it's just, I think this particular item was approved last month by, or no, November?
Yeah, the actual interlocal was approved November of 2019 so that we can join their interlocal cooperative with Mesquite. What we're asking for is permission to utilize the Mesquite interlocal contract through Cardinal Health, which they will be the ones providing all of the pharmaceutical supplies, materials and services, and related products for the pharmacy. And the average, right now, our estimate is about 40,000 per month, so during a 12-month period, we were asking for about $500,000 for the next school year. And of course, their estimate is about 40,000, so that's about 480,000, and we're adding an extra percent just in case we need to, you know, so we're not short on any, on any needs that we might.
Half a million bucks.
I mean, there's always questions.
And just to elaborate on the quote, it's mainly on the number of prescriptions that we're anticipating to provide within the clinic and the type of prescriptions that are going to be dispensed. So, of course, that number could fluctuate, but it's just basically on current experience or activity in our health plan.
Question?
Mr. Morales?
Are we going to be discounted as far as what type of prescriptions we get? Is there going to be a source that we have, we can get to at the state level, to where we can utilize discounted prescriptions and, or is it just a flat rate we're going to, like anyone else?
It will be, no, I will not say just like anyone else. It will be a, I guess, negotiation between Socorro ISD's pharmacy and Cardinal. Even though that we're going through an interlocal, we have the ability to negotiate certain items, not, probably not all of them, but some items directly with Cardinal.
So, is that our only source, this company, to get these pharmaceuticals?
Not, there's three, if I'm not mistaken, in this area. One of them is Cardinal Health.
And if you don't mind me asking, why did you choose this one?
Unfortunately, I don't have an answer for you, will be more so a question for Dr. Garcia and Dr. Nevades, but I can get that information if needed.
If I may add, this interlocal that was approved is because Mesquite's clinic already is using this particular vendor. So, if we were to reach out to any other vendor, first of all, there's no procurement method, even though they could sell product, but there's no way that we could purchase through them because they're not either in a cooperative contract or an interlocal agreement. So, this is our initial option at this time. Now, we might have some ability to use any state contract, depending on the volume and the usage, and that's why the, you know, requesting this dollar amount, and it's something that could, it's going to be monitored over the first three months, six months, and kind of see the utilization, to see where if we're going to have to decrease this dollar amount or increase this dollar.
You're talking about the manager, the person that we've hired already, that, did you say he, what was her name?
Dr. Garcia, the pharmacist.
No, the other, you mentioned, I thought you mentioned another person that's, that's the person that's recommending this Cardinal company.
No, it's?
It's a doctor? Okay.
President Nahara?
Mr. Getta?
Mr. Garcia, you mentioned that we approved this back in November?
The interlocal.
Interlocal agreement with? With Mesquite.
With Mesquite and Cardinal or just Mesquite ISD?
Just Mesquite, so meaning that if Mesquite has multiple contracts available as needed by the clinic, then we would come and ask permission, hey, you know what, something came up with lab, some labs, then if they have a contract in place, we can utilize that.
Was the amount, 500,000 dollars as well? And was no?
No, that amount is between Cardinal Health and SISD. So, the only thing that we're, that we're using with Mesquite is the procurement method, right, is that they have a contract. So, one of the things that we're finding out is that school districts don't have these types of contracts. We have contracts for nurses, but when it comes to a clinic setting, 99% of the districts throughout the state do not have this type of contract.
New territory.
Mr. Gannon?
Well, first of all, I mean, I'd like for you guys to thank Mesquite for all the help that they've given us. I mean, that is, that is really awesome of them to even lend a hand and, and let us, you know, do this interlocal agreement with them. From my understanding, that this in the long run saves us money, right, somehow, by being in this interlocal agreement with them because of the time itself and?
Yeah, I think time-wise is the biggest thing, right? So, if we, there's something that we need, we can either bid it out, which could take, you know, three months, two months, four months, depending on the complexity.
We've been working on this for a while already, and the whole purpose of it was to show that this board and everybody else in here that, you know, we're trying to do the best for our employees and give them something where it's not taking more money out of their pockets. And, you know, that's why we decided to go this route with our own clinic for our employees. And by what I'm hearing, they're just waiting for that door to open and, you know, so praying to God that everything turns out great, and this is a big success for all our employees and, and like I said, I know it's been a lot of hard work. So, I really thank all of you for putting in the time and, and like I said, hopefully this, this clinic, you know, really does what it, what we meant for it to do, which is not only save our employees money, but save the district money as well and our taxpayers. You know, bad part is the location across Mountwood High School, so, you know.
Don't even try it.
But no, again, guys, I, you know, everybody here that's had a hand in it, you know, even the board members here, it's something that we've been contemplating for, got a couple of years already. So, again, gentlemen, thank you, all of you that had a hand in it, so hopefully, I'm almost there, so, again.
President Nahara?
Mr. Getta?
Mr. Garcia, I'm sorry, I have one more question. We mentioned, just I understand, when you mentioned Cardinal Health, a pharmaceutical, did we look into Walgreens and CVS or?
We're trying to take business from them, what are you talking about?
So, typically, it's a matter of the supplier and the type of discount that we can get. I know that's one thing that Dr. Garcia looked into, and this is not only something that helped expedite the process to be able to make the drug or the prescriptions available by the timeframe that we had anticipated, but also the level of discounts that we will be able to achieve with the consumption of the formulas. So, again, I don't have the specific numbers, but that's something that I can most likely have available.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Got a second?
I have a motion by Mr. Gandada and a second by Mr. Morales. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you. Item 3F, consider approval of purchasing cooperative Region 19 allied states financial benefit services. Mr. Carmona?
Again, good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. This is related to the upcoming open enrollment process that we typically host during the month of April. There is a cooperative available for us through Region 19, again, through allied states, and what we're looking at is being able to utilize the web enrollment platform or the host, the web host, that it's available through this particular vendor, Financial Benefit Services.
Mr. Garcia, is there anything?
No, it's just part of, like Mr. Carmona indicated, it's just part of, we are shifting from our current carrier to FBS, who is a new carrier that certainly is a little larger than our current vendor, and so it's just to help out with ancillary services, open enrollment, ACA compliance, and benefit administration.
And there's no cost to the district for these services? Sir?
Can't beat that. Motion to approve? I'm making him sweat it out a little bit.
I have a motion by Mr. Gandada and a second by Mr. Men. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Item 4, Board Workshop A, Enrollment Boundary and Facility Planning. Ms. Macias?
Yes, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. I'd like to begin by recognizing Mr. Juan Jaime, Karen Gonzalez, and Lita Lujan, also Ms. Hilda Miranda for their expertise and continued support in our ongoing district improvement study. Today, I'll be sharing with you 19 years of history. It includes district enrollment, boundary, and facility planning. With that, in 2001, our enrollment was 28,268 students. We're currently, as of today, at 47,667. The numbers that I'm showing you are from snapshot data, which is the last Friday in October. This is the information that we submit to TEA. With that, we have grown a total of 68.3% in these last 19 years. 19,000 new students. At this time, 2001, we had three high schools, six middle schools, two K-8 campuses, and 13 elementaries, a total of 24 campuses. We're currently at 47 campuses with our two specialties, which is 49, so we have increased our facilities by 100%. We currently have six high schools, going to have 11 middle schools with a new middle school that you all have approved in the East Lake feeder pattern, five K-8s, and we will have 25 elementaries, again, with our new elementary coming up in the East Lake feeder pattern. Yearly growth here are by students. I know that oftentimes you all ask, how many students have we grown this year? So, from last year to this year, we've increased by 761 students. And again, in 19 years, we increased 19,000 students, so on average, we increased about 1,000 students per year within these past 19 years. Total growth, 19,307. Percent change in geocode, and this is where Mr. Juan Jaime is the master. From last year to this year, this is exactly where our students are moving into. Going from north to south, the areas in red, Cactus Trails, Dr. Sushuk, those had the largest increase of students moving into that elementary attendance zone. Then again, from north to south, we have Purple Heart, Sergeant Jose Carrasco, Loma Verde, Butler, and Sierra Vista. Those are the campuses that continue to have the growth, and right now, I'm going to share with you some of the new subdivisions coming into play. If you notice, the new subdivisions are on the easternmost side of our district, and that's why we're consistently bringing you boundary adjustments so that we're consistently transitioning and ensuring that we're maximizing the use of all of our facilities. Within, from 2007 to present, we actually have 9,525 single-family, multifamily units in the books. We have it down to a formula, we have, we calculate .6 of a little one for each of the homes that come in within the next five to 10 years, and we calculate .3 of a little one in our multifamily units, which are apartments. So, with that, we should have more than 5,000 students coming to us within the next five to 10 years, and it's important for you all to see where they're coming. Again, in the Pebble Hills area, East Lake area, Americas area, and we actually have growth down in the valley, down in Socorro, which is great because we have that available capacity there in those areas. Projected new housing, we use this information to see how soon they're going to come. Last, or just this past December, I came to you to approve a boundary because they actually moved in sooner than we projected. We actually look at filed, final, preliminary, and land study. The areas in red, that means that we should be seeing them within this year, and we actually, if you look up there, the new And we actually, if you look up there, the new boundary that you approved for Paso del Norte, we actually have students already moving into that area, and they're part of our campuses already. We have in the Carrasco area, again, students moving in, and also in Sushuk. So, those areas in red, from now until summer, we're gonna start having those students enroll into our schools. The final area, which is in orange, we should be seeing students within the next two to three years from those new subdivisions. Preliminary is three to five years, and the land study stage, which is about five years to ten years when we start seeing the students. And again, this helps us project. The next time that I see you all, I'll be sharing with you capacities. I'll be sharing you our facilities as far as capacity, and I'll also be sharing you recommendations for new facilities that we might need. Within the last nine years, we've grown an average of one-point-two-five percent. So, those are, that's the percentage that we use to round off within our next ten years to see where we're gonna stand. And what we do is we're always looking, and I know that I present this to you all, within a yearly basis, Dr. Espinoza very actively looks at how we're doing from year to year. So, TMS ISD is a destination district. The factors are really tiny, if you all could see them up there. And what we do is every single year, we kind of see where we're projected to be and what factors are actually implementing or affecting our projected enrollment. So, if you notice, back in thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen, and fifteen, sixteen were kind of flat. That was flat throughout the County of El Paso. Actually, the County of El Paso had a three percent decrease from Kinder all the way through second grade. It was just something that we were experiencing. So, with that information, these are certain things that we put into place. For example, in fifteen and sixteen, we implemented the universal half-day pre-K. And from there, we started seeing, again, maximizing the use of our facilities. In fifteen and sixteen, we also implemented early college programs at Socorro High School. In sixteen, seventeen, Motwood High School, seventeen, eighteen, at Americas High School. In 2018, nineteen, we did have the opening of two IDEA charter schools. And again, we're always proactively looking how we could provide additional opportunities for our students. For just last year, in nineteen-twenty, we had early college programs at East Lake, Eldorado, and Pebble Hills High School. We also had open enrollment, and we expanded our full-day pre-K services. We knew that we had a waiting list. That was something that our community wanted, so that's something that we were able to provide to the community. In 2019, twenty, we were also identified an A-rated district and post-secondary readiness distinction. In 2021, full-day pre-K for all. That's something that we're projecting to do. We're also projecting to do a three-year-old pre-K program for the first time within our district. We do have in 2020, twenty-one, the opening of an IDEA charter school in the Horizon area. In 2020, twenty-one, opening of two Harmony of Science schools, which is one campus that will be coming open. And we also have IDEA charter schools, two campuses, four schools coming open in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. However, what we're gonna do is we're also going to expand our dual-language academies, and that's something that we will propose to you in the future. And of course, we always look at areas that have available capacity, and of course, our leadership to provide those services to our community. And the last thing that I have, in 22, twenty-three, we are gonna open our new elementary and middle school combo in the East Lake feeder pattern. So, we always receive your feedback and input, and that's so important. That way, we're always projecting as we're moving forward. We always try to project within the next five years. And again, there's always factors that come into play, so that's why we come on a yearly basis so that we could adjust. So, this, I'm gonna go quickly, and you guys tell me if I need to slow down because there's seventy slides total. But it shouldn't go too, it shouldn't be too long. So, with this, I know my colleagues love me for this because I get all excited with all these numbers. So, here, again, it's just a time lapse of high schools. So, here I go. In twenty-one, twenty-two, we had three high schools, about twenty-eight hundred students. And here we go, twenty-two, twenty-three, and I'm just gonna keep going. In twenty-four, or 2004, 2005, that's when Eldorado High School came into play. The reason this is so important is whenever I come and propose boundaries, we always look at our previous adjustments to ensure that we're not touching the same boundaries because I go and ask for permission and forgiveness for the community, and we want to make sure that we are holding to what we're doing in our planning. And here we go. And as you see, our enrollment continues to increase. In 2010, that's where we have East Lake High School come into play. Twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, Pebble Hills gave into fruition. And starting here in 2016, again, directed by the board, we started making adjustments to our boundaries. We wanted to make sure we were maximizing the use of all of our facilities and being good stewards of our money. If we were gonna come and ask for any facilities, we wanted to make sure that we were not gonna close any facilities down within our tenure. So, with that, now you're gonna start seeing some of the adjustments that we made to ensure that we, I call them our empty nester, west side of the community, and our fast-growth to the east side, we started balancing to make sure that as Pebble Hills grew in, Eldorado, Motwood, that we balanced them off. Americas and East Lake, we use them to balance. And of course, we have our Socorro District, which, again, we have some new growth in that area. And this is where we're currently at. Twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, we have six high schools currently at forty-seven thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-five. And again, we've grown a hundred since that snapshot data. And here's our middle schools and K-8s. And again, I'll go quick for time lapses. Two thousand and four, I have a little asterisk whenever we actually had some bond approvals during that year because if you see the asterisks, then you start seeing how the facilities come into play within the next two to five years after a bond was approved. The schools on the left, as they show up through the time lapses, are the schools that opened up in that year. And those are how the adjusted boundaries were presented and recommended and approved by the board. And again, currently, twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, we're currently transitioning Herschel Antoin into a middle school and Paso del Norte into an elementary. What that did, instead of asking, we needed middle school capacity in that Eldorado feeder pattern. We grew up there. Before, we needed capacity for elementary because it was a fast-growth, young feeder pattern. Now, they're growing up. We needed middle school capacity. So, instead of asking for a middle school facility, what we did is we transitioned Herschel Antoin. We're doing it in three years to a middle school. That way, there's a middle school that serves all of their students that are north of Edgemere. And then, all of the students south of Edgemere will be served by Hernando Middle School. So, now, we have a middle school north of Edgemere and one south of Edgemere. With that capacity, we should be good for the next five to seven years to meet the needs of that middle school enrollment in the Eldorado feeder pattern. And here are our elementaries. Back in 2001, 2002, we had thirteen elementaries, two K-8 campuses, at twenty-eight thousand students. And this one goes quick because those little ones are the ones that transition into the Socorro District much quicker, and then they grow up into middle school and high school students. So, currently, twenty-four elementary schools, five K-8 campuses. And again, we have another elementary coming and another middle school coming in the East Lake feeder pattern. Tenure forecast, back in 2016, we had Templeton and VOK demographics that came and gave us some projected numbers. They were quite conservative. And based on the numbers, if you notice, in 2019, they projected us to hit the forty-six thousand mark. We actually hit forty-seven thousand. In 2023, 2024, that's our projected, based on the one-point-two-five percent average, that we should hit fifty thousand students here in Socorro ISD. And by 2025, 2026, we should be about fifty-one thousand students here within our district. And this is our current makeup that we have. If you notice, high schools, we have one high school in each of the feeder patterns. Middle schools, a good number for middle schools are two. Pre-K-8s, we have one in each of the feeder patterns. Elementaries, we have four to five. Where you have asterisks are the projected numbers that are coming in. East Lake feeder pattern, we know we already have a middle school approved and an elementary, so those are included in the calculation. Eldorado with a transition of Herschel Antoin and PDN, they're also included in that number. And of course, elementaries, the four to five. So, based on the information, Socorro is continuing, are continuing to grow. Down in the valley, we have available space. Yay, we need it. Pebble Hills, East Lake, and Americas, that's something that I'm gonna share with you with, the next time that you see me. I'll bring campus enrollment and campus capacity. And that's something that, at that point, I will be sharing with you the recommendation for new facilities within certain areas. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Macias.
Yes, if I may, do you wanna, you know, thank Ms. Macias, Lita Lujan, Karen, I'll see Juan, who's... Juan, there you are. Juan, I mean, their entire, their team. You know, we are a growing school, an amazing school district, and keeping track, boundary adjustments. We gotta build the school here, build the school there, which we've done in the past, and we'll probably have to continue to do it. It's hard to do so. The entire team, great job. You know, today, I was down the street at a little gas station, and I went and got some lunch. And I'm there waiting, placed my order, I'm there waiting, and in the newspaper rack, there's this article on my right hand. And on the story, the headline is, "Socorro ISD Moves to Open Enrollment." And it talks about, you know, the challenges and the changes. Real positive article about our school district. And talking to the reporter, you know, when we did the interview, she goes, oh, that's because you guys are known, you know, you have a great reputation, you know, I just wanted to share that with you, you know. So, a lot of great things have happened and will continue to happen. But again, there are some challenges that we talked about, that Ms. Macias talked about. You know, we've done, in my opinion, a great schools, great schools, a great school district will make a fantastic community, which is what we have. And part of the growth, why people want to come here, is because obviously our track record, but also of the new programs, Win Academy, the early college high schools that we have, pre-K, dual-language, four-year-olds, three-year-olds, and we just continue to push the envelope and will continue. And as Ms. Macias said in her presentation, we have charter schools that are moving in, right? And we could simply say, oh, that's amazing. New charter school going up just on Vista de Sol, and Joe Battle. They'll help us take some of these kids. We need some help. But in our school district, these kids, we do everything for them. We treat them and we educate them as if they were our own children. Because I know in my heart that where they will get the best education is with our school district. So, you know, I cannot thank, and some of them, some two individuals specifically are in the room that I want to recognize because they always, always help us fight for our students. And that's SCA, Angie Soto, and Veronica Hernandez from AFT, you know. So, I can't thank you all enough, you know, for your leadership and your partnership with our school district of hanging on to our students. So, again, great things happened. I'd encourage you, if you haven't seen this article, it's a fantastic article about Socorro ISD.
Ms. Macias, one question. In order to maximize our facilities, I understand the need for boundary adjustments, but will we have any for the next school year?
Not for this. I will be coming, usually, my time is November. I'm hoping to beat it and bring it to you for October. I, one thing, one recommendation was if I could bring the boundary adjustments a year before they are implemented, and that was the last time that I shared, or I shared with the community. I did share with them that the reason I was coming at the time was we had just gotten the bond approval, so we were running. So, since we do have the new elementary and the new middle school coming up at East Lake, I did share with them and promised them that I would propose the boundary adjustments a year before opening. Those schools are scheduled to open July of 2022. So, therefore, next year, or this year, November, if not earlier, I will be coming and presenting you those proposals. I do go out on a little tour, so therefore, I should present them to you, I'm hoping about May. That way, I give you my initial proposal because once I go out to the community, and of course, with your input, there are certain adjustments that we make. And that way, when I bring you the final recommendation, October, November, then it's solid. That means that we've received all the feedback and input, and the proposal that I'm presenting is well-thought and with everybody's eyes on it. So, I will be bringing you one, but it'll be in effect for 2022, 2023.
Okay, perfect.
Are there any other questions? A long response to...
No, it was perfect. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Macias. Thank you all. Item 4B, Health Plan Projections for Fiscal Year 21. Mr. Ressa and Mr. Garcia. Look, Tony looks confused. I'm sorry. I read it wrong. I'm sorry. I had the CH local. My apologies. I'm sorry. This is Gallagher SISD's Health Plan and Risk Management Consultant.
You should have seen their faces.
Tony looked confused. I was like, wait a minute, what did I do? I apologize.
Good evening, Board President Nakhira, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. My name is Mario Carmona, Director of Employee Benefits and Risk Management. This evening, I have Mr. Lou Arias from Gallagher Consulting, which is our consultant for health benefits and services provided over at the clinic. The item that we're gonna be discussing is related to the Health Plan Projections for Fiscal Year 21. During this presentation, we'll be reviewing the Health Fund Fix Cost Estimates, Financial Assumptions, and Projections, which are based in twelve months' worth of data. Rebate Timeline for Express Scripts, our Pharmacy Benefits Manager. Current Benefit Highlights, a projection for July 2020 under the current plan benefit design, which includes the renewal summary and the calculated rate action. So, if I may... Mr. Arias, you wanna go ahead?
Good evening, Board President Nakhira, Superintendent Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. My name is Lou Arias. I'm with Gallagher Benefit Services, and we act as your consultant on your health plan. And so, as Mr. Carmona mentioned, what we're gonna do here is we're gonna go over what your cost projections are for Fiscal Year 21, Plan Year 7120 through 63021. And so, I know you have the presentation there in front of you. Before I get started, I want to tell you, so we did make some assumptions with the numbers that you're looking at. The assumptions are that the effective date will remain 7/1 of 2020. We did use twelve months of claims data, 11/1/18 through 10/31/19. We assume the administration fee assumption would increase by three percent, which is minimal. The stop-loss premium increase assumption was twenty percent. As you might know, you all are self-funded. That's the one thing that we do bid out every year, is the self-funded portion, which is the actual insurance part of your self-funded program. That does require for us to bid that out yearly because stop-loss companies only put out stop-loss rates for a twelve-month period. So, we made some assumptions, and of course, this could change once we do the stop-loss RFP. We assume that there would be no migration from plans, from the plans, that the current benefits will remain, and that's what, that will be true for the first cost projection that we go over, and I'll explain those. And that the pharmacy rebates are not included. We estimated the pharmacy estimate would be four-point-six million annually. I'll explain a little bit more as to why we don't include that in the presentation. Okay, so, let's go, did I go too far? So, I wanted to talk about your rebate timeline. So, the reason, a couple of things on rebates. So, rebates, your current PBM or Pharmacy Benefit Manager's ESI, Express Scripts. And so, based on the last RFP that we did, they did a study, and they look at what the utilization was on your prescriptions the year before last. And based off of those prescriptions used, what the calculated rebates would be projecting forward, assuming that we have the same number of scripts written and kind of sort of the same mix of prescriptions. And so, that rebate amount can fluctuate based on number of scripts written and the types of scripts that are actually written. When I say types, meaning specialty drugs, brand name, generics, whatever that script mix may be. But it was projected to be about four-point-six million. However, the way that the rebates work, you don't get all four quarters in one fiscal or plan year. And so, I've demonstrated here on the timeline, just so that we're aware, when we say four-point-six million, it does come in spurts. And so, for your first quarter for Plan Year 21... And so for your first quarter for, uh, plan year seven, one, nineteen, that rebate, uh, is estimated to arrive on March 1st, because there is a lag. Once the first quarter goes by, there's about a hundred, 90 to 150-day lag for them to true-up claims and then generate a rebate based on the, uh, utilization. Then the next quarter would be 10, one, nineteen to 12, thirty, one, nineteen. That gets paid out in the following plan year. So this year you'll get, in June, you'll get the last, uh, second quarter of your plan, uh, in June for fiscal year 2020. So for 2020, you're only gonna receive two rebate payments because of that lag. Now, 1, 1, 20 through 3, 31, um, that will get, uh, received, that will be received on 9, 1, and 4, 1, 20 to 6, 30, 20 will be received on 12, 1. And if you look at it, that gives the plan a chance to catch up. So in that particular fiscal year of 2021, that'll be the first year where you actually receive four quarters of rebate checks. And then we repeat the cycle again, um, starting on 1, 1, 21 going into fiscal year 2022. So this was just to demonstrate that you won't always get four quarters of rebate checks. You will receive all four quarters of a rebate check in, uh, 2021. So having said that, here are your current benefits. If you remember, um, around this time last year, we did an RFP, um, and a lot of that was due to a network disruption that was taking place with Cigna with, uh, the tenant facilities, which is one of the major hospital systems here. So it forced the district to go out to bid. Ultimately, after going through all those bids, you decided, uh, your insurance committee in this board decided to stay with Cigna. It did improve their offer, so it was a good thing that we went out to bid, but you did change your, uh, PBM, your Pharmacy Benefit Manager, over to ESI. However, the benefits did not change, they remained the same. Last year, when we did this exercise, there was a discussion, the exact same discussion, which I'll bring up a little bit later in slides, where we did have to make some changes from your initial plan, but this is what they look like today. So once we take all the data, we, we send this over to our underwriters and they do cost projections for your next plan year, because you're getting ready to start your next plan year on seven, one. Mr. Carmona's gonna start his open enrollment, and so we have to have rates, um, and how we're going to fund for that particular plan. So we started working on this, um, back in late December, um, early November, late December, uh, is when we started really kinda taking a deep dive. I won't bore you with all the math on the left, that's all underwriting, underwriting and actuarial speak. But where I do want you to look is on the far right. We are showing what your current fees are and with the percentages and changes, which should match up with what I talked about earlier as far as the assumptions. And if you go down to the bottom, um, you're looking at the rate action that's needed for this coming plan year is 19.8%. So based on leaving the plan designs the way that they are, the rate action that needs to take place in order for you to, to, um, properly fund your health plan would be a rate action of 19.8%. So for your current plan year, this is what that means. So if you look at on the left where it says current cost, I'm gonna need to look at mine, I can't see that far. So if you look at that, uh, that amount, um, it's showing that the total cost, uh, is $50 million. Currently, today, um, the district contributes $575 per employee per month. The employee portion equates to 12 million, 12.8 million of that. Socorro kicks in the other 37, uh, million dollars for a total of $50 million. That's what's needed today, um, if we leave the plan the, exactly the way it is, without changing the contributions and without changing your plans. So if you look on the left-hand side, I ran some scenarios here. So for the first scenario here is showing that if there was an even split, that the district split the 19.8% with the employees. So that would change the, uh, the employee portion, it would kick it up an additional 2.5 million. The district would kick in an additional 7.4 million. That 575 P E P M would need to go up to 688, uh, P E P M. And that would get you to your 60, uh, I'm sorry, your, yeah, your $60 million in claims, um, or $9.9 million. That's where that money would come from. And to the left of that, we're showing what the actual deductions would be for the employees. The other scenario that we're looking at here is if we, if the district remains and stays with the 575, uh, contribution and passes that increase to the employees. So what that would mean is that the, uh, employees would kick in, uh, $22 million, um, of that cost. The district would stay at 37 and it would total $60 million. The employee, the school district's contribution would remain the same, since that's being passed on to the employees. And again, these are just scenarios. We have to show you all, all the scenarios, even if they're not pretty to look at, that we wouldn't be doing our job unless we showed you what that looked like. And then the last scenario is if Socorro ISD takes on that 19.8% um, of that, of that rate action. And so the employees' portion would remain the same, they wouldn't kick in any additional dollars. The school district's portion would go up about 26.6% um, to c- come up with the 9.9 million. And, uh, the P, the P E P M of 575 would need to go up to $727.91. Now, before I move on to some of the other options, that's if we leave everything the same. When I start going through some of these other options, because we have to find a way to find that 9.9 or 9.8 million dollars, 9.9, there's only a couple of ways to do that. And that's one, either through plan design changes, and we're talking about changes in deductibles and co-insurance and maximum out-of-pockets. Copays we can change, but they really don't move the needle that much. Or we change the contribution, the contribution strategy. Either the contribution strategy from the school district, the, the contributions from the employees, or some combination thereof of contribution and plan changes. I completely understand, I was here last year and we went through this exercise and I learned very quickly. And, uh, Mr. Carmona and, uh, Mr. Campoya hammered into me, uh, every month when I come down to visit with them. Socorro Independent School District is very proud of the benefit package that they provide to their teachers. Understand that you have a neighboring school district here, in order for you to recruit and maintain talent, a benefit package and a rich benefit package is very important as part of that, that overall compensation. And so I was very, very careful on what changes to make on the plans without stripping it down, so that that, that statement would still hold true. But the reality is, we have to make some changes that will move the needle more than just a $5 copay change on an office visit. And so I'm gonna run through some, some scenarios that I want you to kinda take a look at and then show you what these dollars amount will turn into, what they would look like based on those scenarios. So the plan change on, the plan change, uh, the first option is on your premier plan, we would change the copay for the emergency room dollars to $500. I know that seems kinda steep, I will tell you, there is a trend in Texas where copays on the ER are on the rise. And it's due to the fact that there are a lot of school districts that over utilize the emergency room. Um, you all are doing a great job of opening up that clinic, so that employees have an option not to go to the emergency room, because that does cost the dis- cost the employee and the district money, so I applaud you on that. But that $500 is to provide steerage to your clinic or some of the other low-cost alternatives like urgent care and telehealth. So that's one option there. On the basic plan, we tried not to touch too much on option one, on the premier plan, cause that is your buy-up plan. On option, um, sorry, on the basic plan, we left the deductible the same. Because if you remember, last year, we did increase that deductible about 150, $200. And so we wanted to leave that the same. What we did do is we increased the out-of-pocket maximum to $5,000. And so what that means is, once the deductible's been met, and the deductibles are usually come into play with in- or outpatient, um, hospital services or surgical procedures. It's not really in play for, you know, your, your colds, flus and allergies and what have you. Once that's met, then the plan kicks in at the co-insurance level, which is, uh, 80%. The employees pay the other 20. Once that 20 hits 5,000, that is the maximum out-of-pocket and the plan jumps to 100%. So we did make that change. Now, a maximum out-of-pockets, we decided to make that change there, because it only really changes the worst, the person that's gonna have the worst-case scenario. This really isn't gonna affect that many people that go to the doctor a handful of times or even have one, a, a surgery, a, a scheduled surgical procedure. This is gonna, this would ma- mainly touch those folks that are chronically ill or have a, 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 uh, a very severe diagnosis such as cancer or a major accident. Because those bills can rack up, and so the plan is still a rich plan. If you had a, a, a cancer episode or a major accident or a heart attack and the bill's racked up 50, you know, to $100,000, the employee is still covered and protected, because the maximum they'll pay per individual is, is $5,000. I know that's a lot of money, it's still a lot of money. Um, but it is, you know, so to speak, a drop in the bucket in comparison to what the actual charges are, that the district ends up paying for those claims. And so we went ahead and made that change, and when you change the out-of-pocket for the individual, naturally you do have to change the out-of-pocket for the family, so that was increased. We left the copays the same, with the exception of the emergency room, so that it would match the premier plan. And so the I, the parts in yellow were the only parts of the plan that we decided to change. So if you notice on the, uh, premier plan, again, I'm gonna go there because I can't see that far. You can look at, at the very bottom, it'll give you what the, uh, rate action or what the new, um, increase is for that particular plan or how much that generates in savings. And so for the premier plan, it's about a minus 2.9% just for changing the, uh, copay on the emergency room. If we move over to the basic plan and we made the changes to the out-of-pocket maximum and the $500 emergency room copay, it made a little bit bigger dent to 5.4%. So, um, that would be option one. If you go to the next slide, here's, here's the money that goes along with those changes. So, um, if we made those changes to the ba- the premier plan and the basic plan, now we're looking at a 15.3% rate action. If we go to the next slide, this repeats the same exercise, um, in that it would show that, uh, if we did an even split of that 15.3%, then the employees' portion would kick up, um, to 14.7 million. Socorro's, uh, portion would kick up to 43 million to make up 57 million. And the new P E P M would go from 575 to 66298. If we did, uh, a shift to the employee only, Socorro stays at 575, um, or 37 mil- 37.3 million, but the employees' portion would go up, um, 7.6 million dollars. And then if we did Socorro picking up the, the cost, then the employee portion would remain the same. Socorro would pick up the additional 7.6 million and your P E P M would jump up to 69340, which is a reduction, um, from the initial, uh, just leaving the plans the same. I wanna move on, um, to the next, um, suggested options that we'd make or decisions we'd make. And so the other thing that we talked about, again, we didn't wanna touch deductibles. Um, what we ended up doing here is, on the premier plan, your current in-network co-insurance is 90%. So if I lowered that to 85%, um, it, it created savings of five, minus 5%. Again, with the $500, uh, maximum out-of po- I'm sorry, the $500 emergency room visit, the maximum out-of-pocket would stay at $3,500. Um, again, changing the co-insurance level does seem like it's a reduction in the benefit, because it was paid at 90 and now we'll go to 85. But if you notice, the maximum out-of-pocket stayed the same. So the end result is, in a worst-case scenario, the employee is still at the same amount. It's just a matter of how quickly or slowly you get to that number. So for somebody who only goes to the doctor, uh, and has a surgery maybe once a year, you're not really gonna hit that out-of-pocket, even if it was at 90%. By changing it to 85%, um, now you're responsible for 15%. And those folks that have that chronic illness or, or, uh, catastrophic, uh, you know, illnesses and accidents, they still have the maximum out-of-pocket of $3,500. So that first change, uh, on the premier plan shows just lowering the co-insurance to 85%. We did the same thing on the basic plan, um, left the deductib- the out-of-pocket maximum at 5,000 and 10,000, but instead of 80% in-network, we changed it to 75% in-network. Um, again, the maximum out-of-pocket stays the same, that doesn't change even from the first scenario. I guess that's gonna hit everyone's cellphone here in a little while.
They're all gonna be hitting in just a second.
So, um, I'll go ahead and go, and so it's a $500, um, copay for the emergency room. That equates to a 6.9% uh, decrease, um, in the benefits. I didn't mention this, but on both scenarios, we left the high deductible health plan exactly the same, we made zero changes to that. And so if we go to the money slide there, instead of going from 19.8 or 15.3, now you're looking at a 13.4 rate action, um, in order to properly help, uh, properly fund the, the health plan with those particular changes. And we'll go through the same exercise very quickly here, so, um, the district, uh, even split. Yeah, no worries. Um, so even split, uh, the employee portion goes up by 1.7 million dollars. The Socorro district kicks in an additional $5 million, that P E P M changed to 652. If they, uh, district decides to keep the contribution the same, then the increase would go to the employees. They would generate an additional 6.7 million dollars. Um, district's contribution stays the same, to the left of that again, would show what those deductions would look like for those employees from, for the, uh, the plan that they're on. And then if the district went ahead and picked up the, uh, the cost, then the employees' portion would stay the same. The district would pay an additional 6.7 million dollars and it would ju- the P E P M would be, uh, 678 dollars. Does anybody have any questions on what I just went through?
Actually, yes, sir. Uh, you mentioned on the premier plan that y'all did not touch the out-of-pocket expenses. Can you explain to me why?
We didn't touch the out-of, we did touch the out-of-pocket expenses on, I believe on the first two options and just touched the, uh...
Just the basic plan?
The, the copay on the emergency room. We did it because that is your premier plan, people buy up to that plan. And in order for you to still have a rich plan for folks to buy up to, we didn't wanna make big changes to the benefits. Your base plan is where the majority of your employees are, and so we wanted to make some changes there, but by not stripping, because they, the, they're not paying as much. Um, and that was a decision that we all kinda looked at and, and said, let's just make those, those particular changes. That doesn't mean that we can't come back with some other changes, but what I wanna caution you in is, is that we can very easily chase our tail all day long, well, what if we change this and what if we change that? And I think what you're seeing is, the biggest changes that move the needle are either gonna be on your maximum out-of-pocket or your, uh, co-insurance levels. If we were to start messing with the out-of-pocket maximums on the premier plan, um, I think that the, it would, it would definitely look like a, a more of a, a reduction in benefits. Uh, and since it is the buy-out plan, that's where we wanted to leave it.
Okay, are there any further questions on this part?
Yes, uh, Mr. Disapocans, at one point, a couple of years ago, we were, the district was paying $9 million, roughly, is that correct, Tony?
Yes, yes, sir, um, what the district has done the last three years is, at the end of the year, we look and we see where we're gonna end up with respect to our healthcare, uh, I guess, uh, fund. And we've made a contribution over and above $575 that we budgeted for every employee. So the last two years, we put in $9 million and the year before, we put in $4.5 million. So in three years, we put in $22.5 million over and above what we budgeted. And so that's why we're coming to you and asking for your consideration to make changes to our healthcare plan, specifically to those individuals who really need, uh, who are really using the plan. If you have a healthy lifestyle, if you're doing everything you can to be able to be healthy, chances are this won't impact you. And I realize you can live a healthy lifestyle and God knows, things happen, right? But the bottom, bottom line is, if you still have an insurance plan that'll help you if you had a cata- catastrophic illness, it's a lot of money, but you'll still will be saved from bankruptcy, number one. So yes, sir, we're putting, we're putting in and we project to do, uh, probably another $9 million, because right now, we currently have about a $3 million deficit in our healthcare fund, operating-wise. Now, we have a fund balance of about $9 million, so it's still in the black. But chances are, operation-wise, we're still running a deficit unless we make some changes to the plan. So I know we're implementing the clinic and we're looking forward to that, and we think it's gonna save us some money. But at the same time, um, this would be certainly something that could help us as we move forward. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I have one other question. Do we have a breakdown of what percentage of employees are on the premier plan, the basic and the high deductible?
Um, I think, if you go to slide... We don't have it. If you go to the current benefits, let me, let me get you there. So if you look at the premier plan, um, you have approximately 1,737 folks on the premier plan. You have 3,000, uh, 399 on the basic plan. You only have 92 people on the high deductible. You only have 92 people on the high deductible health plan. And the high deductible health plan, that's a plan that obviously has a much higher deductible than the first two. It removes all co-pays, so everything applies to the deductible. So if you go to, this includes pharmacy, this includes doctor visits, all gets applied to the deductible. And then you have your indemnity plan, which are for folks that have other coverage, either TRICARE or coverage with a spouse, and they waive the plan. The district will still provide them with an indemnity plan and you have 190 people on that plan.
Are there any other questions at this point? Thank you. We can continue. We have more, right?
Yeah, there's, so where we're at now, so now that we've looked at those options and we've had discussions on the different plan options and the ways that we can split up that particular, that shortfall, if we're not, you know, as you heard Mr. Resa say, that historically, the last two years, the district has put money in from the general fund, two years in a row. I would caution you and continue to do that because basically you'll continue to deplete your health fund. But I understand there's a delicate balance on benefits and contributions when it comes to the employees and keeping a plan. So the next steps are, after today, is to continue to work with the team and determine if there are any other options that you would like for me to run. You can kind of gauge as to how much the needle moves. I mean, by changing the out-of-pocket and even lowering the coinsurance, it did move it, but you're not going to move it $9 million worth. It's going to be tough to move it to half of that amount. But if we want to do something like that, we can provide an updated projection. But again, I don't know that you want to make some really significant changes to the plan because, again, to even find half of that, you would have to strip that plan pretty good or move, maybe perhaps, and these are just suggestions, I've got some ISDs that are making their high deductible health plan the base plan. And it's not a bad plan. It just needs to be properly, people need to be educated on it. But it is, but it is a massive shift to the way that they use a co-pay plan. We can consider crediting rebates for rate action. If we were to put, plug in, you're short 9.9, the rebates are about 4.6. That's almost half. And if you plug that in, now you're only looking at single digits. The problem with that is it's not real cash. The rebates, that's just an estimate. Rebates could come in lower than that. They could come in higher than that, but they could also come in lower than that. And most of my CFOs do not like to use rebates calculated into the rate action, but you can certainly look at that. The other thing we can look at again is the district contribution. And you saw the different exercises here. And so the other part of the equation is making plan changes to come up with that shortfall or contribution strategy. And so we can talk to the district and see what the, what ideas the district might have in the form of increasing the contribution to help offset that cost. By the same token, you can also look at the employee contribution. Now, last year, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Carmona, correct me if I'm wrong, last year, we did, the district did provide it or did increase the employees' contribution, I believe it was $20 across the board for the basic plan and $40 across the board for the premier plan. So they did see an increase last year, along with a minor increase to their deductibles to help offset some of that cost. And then what we need to do is finalize all that because, as I mentioned, Mr. Carmona does have an open enrollment coming up and he needs to be able to put rates out on the table so that employees can make an informed decision. And then so finance can also determine what the finance or what the funding mechanism is going to be. This is always, always, always a very difficult conversation and lots of very difficult decisions need to be had. I have lots of, you're not, a lot of school districts aren't in the same predicament you are. I don't have very many that run even or, for that matter, have a significant surplus. You're self-funded, so the idea at the bare minimum was is to at least break even. And you guys are doing the right thing in putting your pharmacy and your clinic in to help start bending that cost curve, especially on the preventative side. Hopefully, we capture, well, the district captures some folks that go to the clinic for wellness and can, you know, diagnose early and prevent early as opposed to not going and then finding out that we have these health conditions on there. But I will tell you that that is going to take some time. Even if the clinic, you know, people are lining up, as Mr. Gondola mentioned, that they're waiting for it to be used, you'll see some savings, but it's going to need to play itself out over the period of a couple of years. I've worked with Mr. Carmona and we've put together some, what we think are some good benchmarks, and I don't want to step on anybody's toes, but of the number of visits that you need to have and number of scripts you need to have for it to be able to make it work. But you do have some help with that clinic to help bend the cost curve going forward.
Can, we have a copy of your presentation here on our screens, but can we get a hard copy?
Sure, I have those.
Presentation, please. Are there any questions?
Yes, President Haddad.
Mr. Gadda.
And we mentioned about the increase to offset the cost for the district. Last year, we increased it. For the past, and the rest of the board members remember this, the past four years, we've been having an increase on our co-pay, I believe it was. On our next board workshop, can we have every time we did an increase and I guess the amount that we put back into the district's fund, I guess? So we've increased this for the past three years, starting with co-pay. Isn't that correct, Mr. Resa? So if we could get there on the next workshop, how much of, how much of an increase we've had every year to help out, offset the district's expenditure?
How far back should I go? Do you want me to go back?
I think we started to increase probably about four years ago, maybe?
About four years?
Yes, just so we could see what the difference is.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item 4C, CH Local Policy Review, Mr. Resa and Mr. Garcia. Now I got it right this time.
Yes, ma'am. President Haddad, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Last couple of months, we've gone to the various board committees to gather your input with respect to proposed changes to our CH Local policy. And upon reflection, given some of the feedback we received, we felt it was just better if we could present to you our proposed changes with the board as a whole without any request for concerted action at this point in time and get feedback so everybody's here. So if you're with me, I'm going to introduce Mr. Sam Garcia. He'll go over the presentation hopefully quickly. Thank you, Sam.
President Haddad, Superintendent Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. So as Mr. Resa indicated, over several committees, we've been presenting some different concepts in regards to solicitations and MOUs with a note that this does not, would not impact any of the construction scenarios that we encounter as construction has its own policy, CV Local. And so just an overview, CH Local currently indicates that regardless, regardless of the goods or services that cost $100,000 or more that would require board approval. There is also a section there that states that all contracts valued at $25,000 or more for the purchase of insurance require board approval. So those are the two main areas under CH Local. If we continue on with the Texas Government Code, this section is the section that applies to any contracts that are presented for board approval, specifically anything that's over a million must have board approval regardless, okay? And so the other code, Texas Administrative Code, is a code that we hardly get to review. It's mainly education, government code. But in here, then, under this section, it does state that contracts does not require a board action by the governing body if the governing body has the delegation of authority to, to move, to execute contracts, I'm sorry. Item number two, the governing body has delegation to its staff, the authority to execute a contract. And one of the last sections that, as we indicate, we hardly get to see this code is that the governing body does not participate in the selection of a business entity in which the contract has entered into. So just wanted to let, allow you to see that information. So here is a breakdown in $50,000 increments as to how many bids get impacted by those dollar amounts. 16 bids that are valued at less than $50,000, 26 bids between $50,000 and $100,000 and so on. We do have an updated list. We have not shared the types of bids that impact, and we do have that information if you all would like to review that. And also, the other item that we were going to review was any memorandums of understanding in regards to if there was any limit that would be set up. At the present time, all MOUs come for board approval regardless of the dollar amount. And so this is something that we also were discussing if the board would consider any MOUs with no dollar amount or a certain dollar amount limit. And so again, some of the items that by law, for example, the inter-local agreements, like those that were approved last month to join different cooperatives, those require board approval regardless. Purchase of acquisition of property, eastmans of, or licensing. In this case, we bring currently any health insurance or other employee benefits to the board, anything that's E-rate related, anything for the purchase of district of insurance and so forth. So this is a list that has, is not defined within CH Local policy and is something that could or depending on how the board feels comfortable regarding the limits or the types of solicitations or MOUs that the board would like to see. And with that, any, any questions?
I'm sorry, will you go back to the MOU page, please? Okay, it states value greater than X will be board approved.
Yeah, so as we were going to the different committees, as you can see the last note, currently, all MOUs require board approval. And so again, it's one of those items that, based on what we heard through the, for the four committees, is does the board feel comfortable at a certain dollar amount? That's why you don't see any dollar amounts there. So again, as Mr. Resa indicated, right, we just kind of wanted to do an overview to kind of let you all know that when we were requesting was at least any MOUs, at least any MOUs that had a certain dollar limit or it was...
So you don't have a consensus amount at this time?
No, we do not.
Mr. Gondola.
So what you're asking for is right now, we have a set amount of what, $100,000 that you don't have to come to the board for?
Correct.
And with respect to MOUs, any MOUs regardless of whether it's no cost or a cost goes to the board for approval. So what we're looking at for considerations where the board would consider us asking this, asking you if we could raise the limit from $100,000 to $200,000, number one. And two, if we can bring MOUs that are perhaps maybe a certain dollar amount, maybe $50,000 or above, we'd bring for your approval. But I know that we got various opinions as we went through the committees. Some were for, some were very, or against. Some were no, we're going to keep it the way it is. Other board members were amenable to possible changes. And so we're here to get direction before we bring it to action.
I feel like there has to be some sort of structure on it because, you know, just allowing a blank check to give to, you know, $200,000 is $200,000, even $100,000 is $100,000. You know, what we want to know is that, well, the way I feel about it is, I understand there's sometimes you need to expedite things that'll help move the district faster. I have no problem with that. But I think as a board, we still need to be informed on what is being spent with that taxpayer's money. If it's $199,999.99 and 99 cents, so it doesn't come to us, we still want to know about it.
Yes, sir. And so what we can do, if the board's consent, is certainly provide the board through the front-end packet, those bids over $100,000 to $200,000 that were brought to the board for your approval.
One more question is, now that you're coming to, what's the reason that you're coming with this now? Just so we understand why this is...
Certainly, it's, one of the portions has to do with Texas Government Code. Texas Government Code indicates that any contract that comes to the board regardless of the dollar amount has additional steps built into it. And so we've been doing those steps since probably two and a half years. So we've not, we've been in compliance, right? But when we've seen an increase in the construction, and now we're talking about an additional bond, possible bond for the, as it was presented on their growth, then the workload within the staff is something that, at least from my area, is something that I want to be able to have my team meet me, you know, the workload that they're receiving and will continue to receive, right? That comes from me. So the other area is that if we increase limits, 50,000, 75,000, there's 10 bids that are within $100,000 to $150,000.
Right now.
Right now.
And just to give you an example, what's one of the bids?
And I have, if you all want to see some of the actual names on those, athletic training supplies, it's at $100,000. Landscaping materials, $100,000. Rock, land and gravel materials, $100,000. Locksmith services, $110,000. District awards, $130,000. Filters and accessories, $140,000. Radio communication equipment and support at $140,000. So when you look at those 10 bids, that's a bid, an average a bid per month. That one bid per month could save time and allow us to concentrate more time in those bids that are higher volume, right? So we shift our responsibility within those higher contracts, right? So we have 14 contracts that are between $150,000 and $200,000. Elevator maintenance service, $150,000. PA radio equipment, $150,000. Relocation of portable buildings, $150,000. So again, the highest here, paving services as needed, $200,000. Sewerage and grease trap services at $200,000. So when you add 100 to 150,000, that's about 10 bids. Between 150 to 200, that's about 14 bids. So 24 bids, that's two bids a month. Two bids a month is, is not bad, but when you're able to stage them and then concentrate more time on those contracts that we have, plumbing materials at $300,000, garbage disposal $350,000, which impacts the whole, you know, so it's a variety of things, right? Medical supplies, $450,000. Those are for our nurses. Catering service, half a million dollars a year. Paper supplies, $300,000. So we shift that workload to concentrate on these higher volume.
So my next question was, who would be approving this? So we're on the record, if we say we approve that you have up to 200,000, that you don't need a board approval, who would be checking this out? Who would be saying, okay, this is what, this is fine, this 199,000 bid here is going to go and...
Sure. So at the end of the, at the end of the year, external audit is the one that reviews these. So regardless of the dollar amount, anything over 50,000, it must be bidded out.
No.
So administratively, it would be the department in charge of this particular purchase, so to speak. I mean, we work with your operations department, might be academic service department, it might be child nutrition department. Those are the areas that would be making this.
So like you'd have Mr. Drayton approving one, you'd have yourself approving?
We're the combination of the purchasing department. The purchasing department has the final say, says, hey, evaluation has gone through, all the references have been done, anything that's tied in with that Texas Education Code.
Well, I just want to know, just to be checking balances, that if there's a number of people are seeing a bid before one person makes that decision. Does that make sense?
President Haddad, question?
Doctor Spinoza.
Have you all looked into, what do other districts have? Do you know any idea?
So it varies, right? And it varies by how the board sees its own operation, right? So there's districts that have a $50,000 limit and there's some districts that have a $100,000 limit. $250,000, we've seen, you know, we've seen other, very few districts that have, you know, half a million dollars, but it just varies. So it depends on how the, how comfortable the board feels.
Mr. Morales?
We had a meeting here with our sub, I believe it was administrative services, if I'm not mistaken. We were talking that you brought it to this, and I recall that you did bring us that information. And that information was that, I guess it was more of a, an average of more, more like 100,000 is kind of what I saw as far as most of the districts across the state. That's kind of a threshold, if I'm not mistaken. And so I kind of, kind of like that figure. Kind of like... And so I kind of, kind of like that figure, and I kind of like the fact that we can kind of keep that to a perspective there. Thank you.
President Nata?
Mr. Getta?
So I just want to make sure that, that I understand this and the rest of the board comprises it as well. So if it's over, you're asking for a hundred thousand dollars in increase, correct?
At this point, we're asking what the board feels comfortable with.
I mean, you would like to have a hundred thousand dollars, but if the board feels differently, if they're amenable to a change?
So everything that goes to y'all, it still goes up for a bid, correct? You guys aren't just going to pick a last keep, but everything has to go for a bid, is that correct?
Correct, yes. And that's why I mentioned that at the end of the year, it's external audit, they're reviews-
Everything goes up for bid, and I understand that. I'm okay with a hundred thousand dollars, it goes up for bid again. Now, keep in mind, when we get a board package, guys, we get our consent agenda. And there's items that go up for bid that we get it all the time, and the customers are ranked by no rank order. Ninety-five percent, eighty-four, and they get a grade. So everything goes up for bid. I'm okay with that for a hundred thousand, it goes up for bid. We're not just saying we're going to go with company A and give them check. It goes up for bid, so I trust what you guys do. I'm okay with that. On MOUs, I'm not okay with that. I really have to come to the board because in case we want to make any changes, even though it's no cost to the district, that I have some questions with about the MOUs, but as far as the raising it to a hundred thousand dollars, we've been doing that for years. Everything goes up for bid anyway, so I'm okay with that.
President Nata?
Mr. Roger?
And with all due respect, I beg to differ. I, you know, again, when something is coming to this board, the additional compliance with the Texas Ethics Commission, I mean, they're having to do it anyway. So I, I don't feel comfortable with changing that, that amount, especially after we've seen some of the largest districts across the state. I want to say, I think Dallas ISD, if I'm not mistaken, Houston ISD. I mean, there were some of the biggest districts in the state that still had that hundred thousand dollar threshold. And I don't think, again, if something, a contract doesn't come to us, we're the ones that are fiscally responsible for, for managing the budget of the district. I agree with Mr. Guerra with regard to the MOU. If the MOU is even at no district cost, that MOU, even though it's not costing us any money per se, it's still costing us time and effort of our employees, depending on what the MOU is, of course. I mean, in my professional work, I work with MOUs with the universities and training staff for educational diagnosticians, speech and language pathologists, occupational therapists. Those are things that, again, the district has to be able to say, yes, we're, we're okay with this because that's our staff that is providing the mentorship, the training. And I really think that we need to be aware of that, again, because they're asking us as a district, you need to provide, you need to provide, you need to provide, you need to provide, and they're going to be responsible for XYZ. I still think it needs to come to the board, regardless if there's no money involved. Because again, it may not be a dollar amount, but those are our employees, those are our staff that, that are providing the support, the mentorship, the services, that whatever the MOU. And there was one that came to us not too long ago that we had some questions on. And, and I just still think that, you know, it's, for the most part, again, and I've said this before, I don't think anybody on this board, and, and I understand, you know, there's times that we need these MOUs signed, or, or you know what, it didn't get on the, on the board agenda for us to be able to discuss it and approve it. But I've been on this board for almost ten years, ten years already. And, and again, in, in my tenure on this board, I don't think any of us have ever said, no, we're not available to, even if it's a five, ten, fifteen, thirty minute meeting to discuss a contract or to discuss anything. And, and I know we've got some new board members on, on, on the, on the team. However, we're here tonight for the workshop. Anytime something is presented to us, for the most part, and I will speak for myself, I don't think I've ever had a problem coming to the board to be able to discuss that. So that's just my two cents. Probably more like five bucks worth, but-
Can I see the list, please, of the things that, the MOUs, interlocal agreements that you had listed?
I don't have a list of the MOUs, I do have a list of the solicitations, the bids.
No, sir, you had, one of the PowerPoint screens listed MOUs, interlocal agreement, and several. And one more? There we go. Okay, so all of these items currently come to the board for authorization, correct?
As a practice, not because it's written on the, on the, so, so we've seen, when we reviewed CH local policies, and maybe that's something that probably the next thing we do, is that some districts are specific. This is what every, regardless of what it is, if it's an instructional bid, regardless, we want to see it. Here in our district, this is what we bring. All types of MOUs, financial, annual financial audit, legal services, purchase of district insurance, E-rate. So again, this is an opportunity to update or expand this list as the board feels comfortable.
President Nata?
Mr. Getta?
And I respect Ms. Flegas' comments, and I agree with on MOU regards backed a hundred thousand dollars. The change that I've been on the board, maybe once, we pulled out an item on consent agenda on the dollar amount. Because we get our board package. We look at the board package, we see the dollar amount, you guys put it up for bid, we're okay with it, and we move forward. We have any questions, we'll give you a little call. We've hardly ever pulled anything out.
So I'd like to make a suggestion. Could we amend it to say two hundred thousand dollars, an interlocal, no dollar amount, it still goes, bring it to the board under new business, and ask the board to just, to say yes or no. And then that way, we get direction from the board where the, the board is, the majority of the board either agrees with it or it doesn't. And that way, or, or, or we could have another workshop if you like, for, for discussion.
Just bring it to the board.
Each item?
Not what he's asking for, if you want to go with that.
Like the inner, okay, but-
Changing policy.
Guys, so every item-
Yes, but changing it to what? I mean, and I think that's what they're asking for is direction tonight.
Guys, have we ever questioned any item in our consent, in our consent agenda before? If we have, and then I agree, let's not move forward, let's not increase it. We haven't questioned any of our consent agenda, and then we should be okay with increasing a hundred thousand dollars?
No, no, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just saying, let's think about the number itself. I'm not saying it's, that we're not agreeing to go with it, but I might be happier with a hundred and fifty than two hundred thousand. You know, I'm just saying, let's have that discussion, let's put that on the, on the agenda, let's have that discussion, and then-
Would that make a difference? Would that help you if it's still two hundred thousand, a hundred and thirty, or a hundred and fifty, is there an increase? Would that benefit you any or not at all?
I mean, certainly any increase is certainly going to expedite whatever impacts, right, the higher of any bids, you know. In this case, we're talking about up to a hundred and fifty, we're looking at ten bids.
How many bids?
Ten.
Ten.
And actually, two of those come to the board because of what they are, right? Annual financial audit, and educators, legal, employment liability insurance. So even if that policy goes down to a hundred thou, less than a hundred thousand, we still bring it because it's, it's an insurance premium.
President Nata? But in this case, if the board agrees to change the, the amount, then those would not be coming to the board unless they fall under one of these.
Yeah, and unless the board updates that list and says, hey, by the way, this is what's, you know, everything's important, but these would be considered critical items or XYZ, and if you list them, then we bring them to the board.
Well, we intend to add these items specifically to make sure that they are part of policy and this comes to the board irrespective of the amount that might be incurred by the district.
My mentality is that, I apologize, Mr. Nata.
Yes, sir.
That we are a growing district, and we haven't touched this in a long time. I think that it needs to increase some sort of dollar amount, I think, but as a board, I think that's one of the things that, you know, the seven board members up here, that we have to discuss that and decide on what that number should be, or if it stays the same. You know, I honestly, my opinion is I think it needs to grow. I just don't know the dollar amount, what we can agree on, if it's going to be two hundred thousand, or if it's going to be a hundred and seventy-five, or a hundred and fifty. I think it's one of those things that, as the board, that we have to discuss and feel where we're comfortable with.
President, can I bring back the policy committee?
Hold on. I'm sorry, Mr. Rynson. Mr. Morales?
I think it's obvious the board is split here, and I think that possibly in the future, you might want to bring it in so as for us to put it up to a vote, because it just, we're going around back and forth, and it doesn't make-
I think that was our purpose tonight, was for them to get some direction, because when we, when they took it to committee, they got conflicting.
Yeah, we were all over the place on it.
Mr. Nagara, if I may?
Mr. Garcia?
I've been pretty quiet, because I think you guys know where I stand. We were in, I think, financial. Yeah, so for me, as most, the most we can be transparent, I think that's good for the community. And it's good for me to be able to explain to, you know, people that ask me things, and I need to see it. And I know you're talking about it's in, you know, how many times I would pull in consent, I just think it's good practice. It's, it's, it's being disciplined financially, so.
And you're saying, sir, that you'd like to keep it the same, the way it is, right?
You would keep it the same?
You're saying that you want to keep it the same?
No change.
President Nata?
Mr. Getta?
If we were to say increase it fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, can we request every month, give us an update of which bids went out? Like we have, like we get a board package weekly?
Yeah, Mr. Resa indicated that, that that would be certainly a, an agenda, a process that we can do, including the Friday packet. So you're aware as to what, what items to-
But here's the thing is, and, and that's if we make changes to the policy, otherwise, we're just adding more work for them. And, and that's the-
Because the items come to our board package regardless of what's going up on consent agenda. We see that on a weekly basis, we see that.
No, we see that monthly, Mr. Getta.
Or when somebody comes up, bid on the consent agenda. But I'm saying, if we were to increase it every quarter, every month, would you be able to give us a report of the bids that were approved? Not to the board, but the bid that you all approved?
Sir? Oh, yes.
Certainly.
So it's still going to be transparent and accountability?
It, it could be, I mean, it could be multiple ways, right? Either certainly a Friday packet, as Mr. Garcia indicated, the public is not able to view it. But certainly, it could be an agenda item, but it's no action item.
I guess my, my point is, we just approve consent agenda. We don't decide on the dollar amount. We just approve consent agenda. And we approve once it's approved to you all. That's my point, so I'm saying. I think what he's saying, we'd like to know what, what bids are out there. I mean-
Well, that's included. We don't tell them, no, that's too much. We don't approve that.
I, I would just suggest that, it's my suggestion again, that you just put it up on the next agenda, and then we hash it out however it comes out. You know, that's-
Yes, sir. I was just going to recommend, one more time, we bring it back to policy, get a little bit more directions, and we can determine what-
I don't really feel that you need to do that. I just really feel that you just need to put it up here and then-
Put it for a vote?
I think, I think it would be best if we did add it to next, our, our next meeting's agenda.
With some tweaks that perhaps what we've gathered from, from the feedback we've gotten today.
I personally see things on this list, the interlocal agreements, the MOUs, that they are very, very rarely questioned. And most of them are no cost to the district. And it not coming, having, not having to come to the board for approval does expedite. I mean, I know we get MOUs about our student teachers being able to finish their internships, and whereas they have to wait until board approval before they can start. You know, things like that, I do not have a problem with not needing board approval. I, I am concerned when this is brought back. Right now, we have given them very little direction because we are different opinions on it. And so it might be butchered when you bring it back, but-
I, I feel it's one of those items that, hey, man, we need to, we need to have, argue about every now and then. We don't, we haven't had a good discussion over something, and why not? You know, that's, that's, that's the point of this board sometimes, that we have to have that discussion. And, you know, like I said, it's very rarely that we've ever had a four-three split, or a, you know, six-two, or whatever. And then every once in a while, it's not a bad thing.
Six-one.
You know, a six-one, you know? You know, it's not a bad thing every now and then. I think it's one of those things that we can hash out, and however lies, it lies, and-
Your best judgment.
Under new business?
Yes, sir. And the board will make a decision. Thank you.
Bring your holy water.
Okay, item four D, graduation requirements and loss of credit audit report. Ms. Carmona?
Good evening, President Nagara, members of the board, Dr. Espinosa. I'm Martha Carmona, internal auditor for curriculum and instruction. In July, you received the audit plan for the school year, and the graduation audit and loss of credit was on there. So on page six of the audit report, I don't know if you have it with you, you will find the methodologies that I applied in conducting this audit. There were two audit objectives. It helps if I move along here. The audit objectives were to verify students' requirements to attend class, school according to the compulsory requirement stipulated in the Student Attendance Handbook and the Texas Education Code 25.085. The other objective was to verify students' graduation requirements completion as specified in Socorro ISD's EIF regulation and the Texas Administrative Code 7414. A little bit of background information, that data entered on the transcript must accurately reflect the student's actual course completion and performance as according to the Texas Administrative Code. The graduation date on the transcript is the date that the student completes all graduation requirements. So there were three thousand five hundred fifty-six transcripts that were downloaded in July. That doesn't mean that all students had a graduation date, but those were the ones that were downloaded. So the ones that were considered for audit were the transcripts that had a graduation date and a seal. There were five findings, and they are reflective of any asterisk or anything that was indicated in the transcript that showed no credit. So those two hundred and seventy-six findings were or are in the report at the very end. The district does have an opportunity to provide me with supporting documentation that supports clearing a transcript, since it is allowed to make corrections to transcripts. So administration reviewed that documentation. They found, I believe, two that were not, that did not meet the graduation requirements. I still have to verify that documentation, and what I found were twenty-nine that did not meet graduation requirements. The findings are there. I can answer any questions that you have on those findings at the end. I made recommendations to the administration. The first one was to create a corrective action plan that is very specific as to how they plan to correct the findings. The second one was for the superintendent to take appropriate action that addresses the findings in the report. And the third one was to ensure that proper notification is provided to the students as it applies for each specific issue. The management's responses to the findings and the recommendations are found in the final audit, and they are written in red text for your review. And again, opportunities to respond and provide the supporting documentation were afforded to the upper level administration. Students who had that supporting documentation were cleared, and those that did not have it were not cleared. Twenty-two of the twenty-nine students were due to loss of credit, and seven were due to not having the credits that are required- the, uh, credits that are required as stated in the regulation. And then, um, you do find, uh, the results after my review on pages 15, 2 through 39 of the final audit report. So at this time, if you have any questions related to the audit report, I can answer those for you.
Ms. Carmona, I do have-
Ms. Morales.
By the way, you did an outstanding job on this report. It's quite extensive, very thorough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Really quick, uh, for the, for the public, I really want to make sure that we all are aware of what, uh, something was very alarming to me was a PIMS, PIMS report. And before I go on to ask you questions, I want to establish what a PIMS report is. Uh, definition is a public education information management system. Uh, basically it encompasses all data requested and received by TEA about public education, including student demographics and academic performance, personnel, financial and organizational, organizational information. Uh, basically this is a governing, uh, system that pretty much runs our entire district, our entire schools across the, the state. Is that correct?
It is correct and we are required to make reports periodically, uh, in the fall, in the summer and such.
And it says here, uh, PIMS data is used, a TEA standards report. It talks about Stan, uh, Texas academic performance reports, accountability system, uh, snapshot and pocket addition. These are things that it's been used for. So we, we have to, you know, my understanding is it, as a former, uh, school principal and a high school, a high school assistant principal, uh, it's a very, very, uh, important system that we use and it has to be, uh, I, I believe ti, uh, there's timelines that we have. I saw something in your report stating that there was a timeline that we had, believe is on page nine, if I'm mistaken, on the report. It says PIMS summer final submission deadline to report courses complete, completion was July 18th, uh, 2019. Students were reported as not having received credit for courses in which they lost credit or failed. The final submission cannot be corrected. And you, uh, after transcripts were verified in October, uh, 2019, the loss of credit had been corrected in many of the transcripts contradicting the final summer PIMS submission. My question to you is if, if we have a, a, a submission deadline, July the 18th, 2019, and we had, I believe there was 200 and 276 discrepancies or errors or whatever the case may be, and, and two of those were corrected, so there were 274 total? How were these, how were these transcripts revised or changed after we were supposed to have had these submitted finalized? And I do know that for a fact that once they're finalized, you can't come back and change information. So how is it that these, these transcripts were changed? That's my question to you.
Okay, so the information on the transcript itself for the, for the record can be corrected at any time. That is in policy as long as there is supporting documentation. You are referring to the PIMS data submission?
Yes.
The PIMS data submission is, uh, was due on July the 18th?
Yes, you said it right here. And you mentioned, go ahead.
In June, uh, the campus principals and their data teams have an opportunity to review everything and ensure and assure the PIMS department that everything is correct before it gets submitted to our superintendent. Once they do that, then it gets turned into the state. At that time, once the final submission is submitted, uh, it cannot be corrected. Uh, I believe the superintendent would need to open a ticket to make those corrections and, uh, there's a process to follow that.
So, so what you're telling me is that between June and the time that the final submission was submitted to the state, there were, there were errors that we, we, you know, we had to revise and we had to check on. Am I correct?
Yes.
They had that period of time.
They had, they had from, they had a period in June to make corrections.
Of all those 276 discrepancies?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. My question is this. When, when you, when did you actually begin the audit?
In July.
July. So this came, so you have, you, you made this report, I'm, I'm sorry, you started July 2019, but then these changes were done in June because, I, I don't understand. Please explain to me.
Okay, so-
How does it go?
I waited until July the 17th to download the transcripts.
Got you.
Because the final submission for the PIMS is in July. So that gave the district an opportunity to make any corrections. That way I would audit the final transcripts. Does that clarify?
Yes, I think so because, but back, I guess we're going, doing some research here. At the end, at the end of the report, you show all the high schools having, uh, maybe you can explain this to me, I kind of got lost a little bit here. You had numbers for every per, I guess from high schools. Are these numbers indicating they're students?
Yes.
Okay. So you're, you're telling, throughout these, I, I looked at 109, 169, there were 169 where you said they lost credit. They lost credit and correct, okay, so no, okay, here it goes. You said no credit in the, in the grade, in the graduation plan. What, what did you mean by that?
The graduation plan is a record that is generated in, in our system, our Tyler system, and that, uh, takes in the courses that are completed by students in which they, they have a grade and/or they earned the credit, uh, through, with the attendance. So if it's not registered there, it means that the student didn't complete it. That was the process that I used to verify before I submitted the draft report, uh, back in November.
Because I've noticing that there are a lot of corrections made after that time. Uh, 10, 29, 9, 7, they're, they're all various dates that were, uh, indicating that-
As I was verifying.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, again, in, in July, I downloaded the, the transcript.
Yes.
And I used the process before I submitted a report to you. I used the process to continue to verify before turning it over to you. So I kept on looking into the transcripts and found that there were, uh, corrections made. That's when, uh, part of the responses, uh, had to include for the administration to provide the supporting documentation to ensure that those corrections to the transcript, I'm talking about the transcript and not PIMS, was made with a supporting documentation.
Another question here. Can these, once these transcripts have been submitted to the state, can they be altered or changed? I thought that was a, an official document.
The transcripts, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, are not submitted to the state. Uh, it's the, what is reported to the state is the graduates.
Okay.
For example, uh, we had however many we had for the year, uh, how many?
3,500, I believe in-
3,500?
3,500.
About 3,500 graduates.
And according to your rec, a lot of those didn't graduate, did they?
In-
According to your information, there were students that did not meet the graduation requirements.
Yes, that is, that is correct.
Am I correct? Okay, accord, and there was a lot, there's a lot of data here that is implicating that there were more than that because of the loss of credit. And there were, I believe there were a lot of things that were here that we're trying to justify. Let me see, I know you went through it. Doctor, yes. So I, I guess the question I have to use, how is it that these students were permitted to graduate when they didn't meet the, the requirements?
Do you want to answer that question?
Good evening, President Nakara, uh, Mr. Morales. So the students that were allowed to walk at graduation were provided, the, uh, the list and the certification was provided by the principal. The principal then provided Ms. Carmona the, the documents that she requested in order to ensure that those students had met the required graduation standards. And as she showed on, some of them, they were clear, um, as seen by the documentation provided.
We're quoting to these records here, it looks to me like there were so many others that weren't cleared.
We have 29 that were not, yes.
Well, and then also too, from pages, I believe it's 42, all the way to 50, in your, and this is in your report, it's stating there's a lot of discrepancies as far as students-
So those are the original, uh, 276 findings out of the review of the 35 plus-
But some of these weren't even corrected. There, there's just not, there's no, there's no information, there's no data stating that these, that they met requirements on these other students, uh, above and beyond these 29. There's, there's, it's, there's, there's one that says there's a, a, a parent got involved and helped this child or this student gain the credit. I, I mean, this is just not, this, this is a, this is not acceptable.
If you can-
It is not acceptable whatsoever.
I'm sorry, Ms., Mr. Morales.
Yes.
If you can, uh, give me the page number so that I can look at it?
Yes, well, I-
Are you talking about the one, the entire list at the very back of the report, Mr. Morales?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And those were the, the ones that were part of the draft?
Yes, and those did not have any review notations. The ones that have the review notations were those that, um, according to the documentation, didn't have the, the credits recovered with a log or did not have the credit showing in, in the transcript. So, so it's, it's a complex, um, report. Uh, I, I explained as much as I could based on the documentation. And, uh, if you have a specific question on what was written, I can respond to that. If it has to do with the campus or the district, then they can respond to that.
But, Ms. Carmona, out of this list of the original, those of your findings in the final draft-
Yes.
Are the 29 students who did not meet?
Correct.
That's it?
That is it.
Okay.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Carmona, I want you to answer me straight forward. The list that we have here, the 270-
How many?
74. Should they have graduated that day?
According to the documentation, sir, no.
They should not have graduated that day.
Not according to the documentation. When we look at, as we narrow it down and clear and review the documentation, 29 students actually did not meet the graduation after extensive review of many, many records.
President Nakara, if I may.
Mr. Garcia.
Uh, Ms. Carmona, I just, I, I want to thank you for your, your diligent work, uh, your commitment to public education, um, and your devotion to this district. Uh, I do have some questions for you and I want you to answer hopefully to the best of your knowledge and ability. Were any transcripts changed or manipulated or grades after July 18th, 2019?
There were transcripts that were changed, yes, sir.
Is there ever a scenario where it is okay to do so?
With supporting documentation.
Okay, and in this case, there were no supporting documents?
For 29 records, there, the documentation provided did not support.
So 29 students graduated and should not have been graduated?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, did your audit find any issues with students who did not meet the 90% attendance minimum?
Many, yes.
Many. Should a principal ensure there is a process in place to verify that all candidates have enough credits and ensure that all candidates have completed loss of credit contracts in accordance?
Yes, sir, and that was written in the executive summary.
Was there a process in place? To your, best of your knowledge?
I'm going to say no.
Okay. In this case, um, okay, no. Now, we're a pretty large school district. Is this common where errors happen, occur?
It is common.
It is common? So-
So there should be systems in place to prevent that.
So do you think this is just a common error, adult human error?
It could be.
It could be?
Yes, sir.
Could? You're not certain?
President Nakara.
Mr. Gata.
Ms. Carmona.
Yes, sir.
As we just, and I, you and I talked about this several times. And we'll look at the findings out of 276 students and down to 29. Obviously there was error.
Yes, sir.
And we had to find out that there was an error. So the error being either the counselor, the counselors didn't get the information to the, I guess, PIMS clerk or vice versa, or PIMS clerk did interpret properly, there were some errors.
Multiple.
Yes. So now with the findings and the corrective action plan that we're going to put in place, and matter of fact, we're hiring, Mr., to, we, we are hiring some, um, some counselors and-
Clerks.
And some PIMS clerk. So, so obviously the 29 students shouldn't have graduated, but there was some, there were some mistakes and we're going to find those and we're going to, we can't, I guess it's he said, she said, correct? And I know we have some principals there in the audience and at the end of the day, they're responsible because that's their campus. Um, and I'm sure we're going to put stuff in place so it's ready to correct us. I'm glad now it's only down to 29 students. Should have been hopefully zero next time, next year, there'll be zero students when we do the audit again next year. Um, and corrective action plan, when are we going to look at it? When are we going to receive the corrective action?
So the administration requested an extension for the end of this month and at the last CNI, um, committee meeting, uh, it was granted to be presented, uh, to you all.
And who's in the corrective action plan?
I'm sorry?
Who, who will be involved in the corrective action plan?
Uh, my understanding is, uh, Mrs. Groce, uh, Mr. Reyna, campus principals, counselors, um, and some clerks.
And directors.
Ms., uh, Ms. Nakara?
Mr. Gata.
You know, I heard, uh, what Mr. Gata said, uh, and I'm going to probably disagree with him. You said, uh, counselors and clerks. I'm sorry, sir. I blame us up here. I blame the gentleman in the middle. I blame everybody down there and everybody sitting over there. This is something we caught this time. We don't know if this has happened before. This is one time that we caught it and it was a substantial number. Because this could have gone a whole different way. Because you know it and I know it. If this had been a lot worse, let me tell you, each and one of us up here would have media outside our doors trying to get an interview from us. So to say that it was just our, our counselors and our PIMS, no, sir. Because I promise you, we would have been answering that. Because it's happened before in another district. And guess what? We would have been torn up.
Well-
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying because it's something that's minimal, but to blame just a certain group? No, ma'am. I blame all of us.
Mr. Menah?
How serious is this issue? Are we in trouble here?
That's a question that, um, I believe the administration can respond to you all.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't, what was that?
That's a question that the administration can respond. I believe they did, uh, reach out to TEA. Is that correct?
I'll respond.
I have a quick question, another one. This is important. What, was this reported at the time when we met up, when we saw that these 29 students did not meet require, because we graduated 29 kids. They weren't, they didn't meet the requirements. Are, are we taking back their diplomas? Have we, have we, have we, have we talked to their parents? If I was a parent and I had my son or daughter graduate and they weren't qualified to graduate or they didn't meet the requirements, I would be very, very embarrassed and very upset. So I'm wondering, did we, did we contact these parents and these students to let them know that their son did not earn that, that high school diploma?
Dr. Espinoza, you want to answer that?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yes, sir, we have, and they were tough conversations. We, uh, called students and, and parents for them to complete some of that, um, courses and loss of credit that they needed to. We also reported it to TEA. So TEA could provide guidance as to what the reporting, um, system would be. On some of those, we were allowed to report them as summer grads and we did so and took away the graduation as June graduates.
So TEA is aware of the fact that we graduated 29 students that did not meet the qualifications?
Yes, sir.
And also the loss of credit and all these, on all these other cases?
Yes, sir, they are.
Do you have a ticket number? And, and by the way, do you have a reference as far as those parents that you talked to? Do you have some type of documentation that you did indeed talk to these parents? I really would like to know who they are and what students did, did not meet this. students did, did not meet this.
I can provide you the doc.
I hope so. And as far as the ticket, there should've been a ticket, authorization number when you did, when you did contact the TEA. I would like to see that as well. And who you talked to, the officer or the director?
Mr. Morales.
I'm very upset about this.
Please, you may be, but they're trying to explain to you what has happened.
Go ahead, ma'am. Please explain.
So I did not make the phone call. Ms. Miranda was the one that made the phone call, as she is the one that has the connections with TEA and with the auditor. If you wanna hear from her us exactly what the auditor said and what our process is going to be, I would ask for.
Ms. Miranda is who? Is, aren't you the, the assistant?
Well, I'm not the PMS coordinator.
Assistant, uh, superintendent for high school?
Assistant superintendent of high schools.
Right, okay.
Yes, sir.
See, I have a, I have an issue with this because my brother, I, I come from a family of seven. My oldest brother did not meet the requirement for graduation. He was of the oldest. He went to Cathedral High School in Los Angeles, California. My parents were devastated that my brother did not meet a requirement for a history class. So he didn't get to walk. There were six of us excited about our big brother graduating from high school. And for some, my father was disgraced beyond, and here, here we are talking about these twenty. For one, trust me, it, 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 it brings a lot of anger to me that my brother didn't graduate and we were there for him, and yet he had to go back at the end. And I think some of these students probably had to go back, or they didn't because they were given a diploma. So therefore, they didn't have to go back. They were given a diploma. And like I said, who's Ms. Miranda? So I, I'd like to ask her who she talked to at the TEA. Who's Ms. Miranda? Where is she? Believe you the PMS clerk?
No, I'm the PMS coordinator.
PMS coordinator, okay.
So, um, actually, I was asked to contact TEA to do an inquiry as to what our options were. Okay? So I did speak to Justin Johns.
Justin Johns.
And he's, um, an auditor. His first direction to me was to let the administration know that if we needed to correct the PMS data, we were to submit a ticket. But that decision hasn't been made, sir. So they are willing to work with us if we need to, to correct the data. So we need to make sure that we are all on the same page before I can put in that ticket, so that we, we're still trying to find, I didn't have a number for him. I did let him know the two that we did, I knew about on that day, we did remove from our PMS file. But I still didn't have a final number as to what, how many students. So I couldn't tell TEA how many students really.
So TEA has no idea that this took place? There's no record, no authorization number, no ticket. Am I correct?
No, there's not a ticket. It was just a conversation.
Just a conversation. You just were trying to get guidance.
Yes, and I was asking for guidance because that way I asked to contact them. So we've been working with them, and they're gonna work with us if that's what we need to correct the records.
Well, I think they're gonna work with us all right. This is not acceptable.
Because we, it has not been reported. It was just.
It has not been reported, right?
But it will be. It will be.
When are we planning to report this? After next graduation?
No, sir, after you all.
Ms. Morales, we need to be respectful.
Review the final report.
I got a question.
I apologize for that.
Mr. Garcia.
Ma'am, thank you for your efforts, uh, in, in doing your best to be candid out here. Why was, why hasn't it been reported?
Because we still didn't have the final, um, audit results. We just got them. That's what Ms. Carmona is presenting. So, I mean, we do have the guidance as to enter a ticket so that they can open the data for us to update if we need to.
And Ms. Groce, in, in the audit report, it only says that management's response was only two.
Yes, that was the initial response when we first started. Uh, Ms. Tommy McCavin and I, with the support of principals and counselors, we review their documentation. As we provided the documentation to, uh, Ms. Carmona, she then went through all the documentation that was provided to ensure that everything matched. What we found is we had five additional, uh, credits, plus the twenty-two loss of credit that.
So what happened?
The five additional, we had.
I mean, no, no, just, just why did this happen?
Again, we look at clerks not entering timely. We also had material that wasn't reviewed before clearance was done at the end of the year. But these are things, Mr. Garcia, that are going to be addressed and changed with our corrective action plan.
Who do you think, in, in your opinion, should we hold accountable for the clerks and the material?
The principal. The principal is the one, and ultimately, myself, as I guide them.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Minna?
I have a question. This is for Ms. Carmona. After we do all this.
Yes, sir.
After all this data has been submitted, the, is it, is it, was there a deadline or something that we have, or is it gonna be okay after we submit all this information back to TEA?
A deadline for state or a deadline for?
I don't know. Are we gonna be okay after we submit all this information to TEA?
So the, the fall submission is due in October, and then there's a period for corrections. Uh, January the sixteenth, I believe, of this year was the final, uh, submission deadline. So any corrections that are made can be made up until that day. If it comes to, uh, after that deadline, then a ticket needs to be opened to make those corrections.
So my question to you, we going to be okay?
I believe if they make the corrections, uh, and report them to the state, I, and, and we can, and we have a plan so that this doesn't happen again, then yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Genna?
Ms. Garcia, I know one of the biggest problems we had as I looked at the report was loss of credit. And we wait till, as the principals there, we wait till the last day of graduation to clear them off.
Yes, sir.
Can we change the policy and maybe make it three weeks before graduation to change it? I'm sure we're still gonna have some loss of credits.
So we can't change that policy, but what we can change is the policy of the carrying over of loss of credit, uh, which is something that we have been talking about for a couple of years. Um, but it takes time and education. We're ready for it. Um, policy FEC and regulation FEC determines what the loss of credit rules are followed and how they're followed. So that's what I'm gonna bring in April to you all after we meet, uh, with the committee again, because I think the committee is providing, uh, providing great guidance, and make those, those changes that are needed. What we're gonna do is we're going to limit for the incoming freshmen, the allowance to carry over loss of credit. They're gonna have to finish any contract within a term time. Right now, we have freshmen that carry over from freshman year all the way to senior year. Some of our students end up with three hundred, four hundred hours that they need to complete. That's a lot of time that they need to put in, on top of their homework, on top of their work, on top of what they do. And they also, of course, probably, possibly have fallen behind in, in credits and are working on that. So that's one item that we're gonna do. We're also, with your support and the support of administration, we have added an LOC clerk at every campus. This person is going to support the data entry that we were lacking. What we can't change going from graduation to submission. We have, we are a year-round school district, and I love it. I think it's good for kids. But for paperwork, it makes it hard because we finish on Friday. This year, we finish on Thursday, and we graduate on Friday. That only gives us a day, really an evening, to clean as much as we can and make sure that everyone has met those graduation requirements. Most districts, Mr. Genna, have a lapse of maybe even two days, the allowance to bring kids in so that they can clear for credits, they can clear, uh, attendance. Um, and we don't have that luxury. We graduate that day, and the state doesn't allow us. In the past, when you and I went to high school, we were allowed a week to clear, and that week did not count for attendance purposes. So we, we were allowing that to be a clearance process. That included loss of credit hours, credit recovery, anything that students needed to do.
President Nahara, I got some questions from Ms. Carmona, if you don't mind.
Mr. Garcia?
Which high schools were impacted by your audit?
Before the final or after the final?
Sure.
Before the final, all of them?
All of them?
Yes. After the final, uh, Americas High School had, uh, zero because all of their students were cleared due to the documentation, supporting documentation.
Okay, now, this particular school, Socorro High School, obviously had a lot more. Have we audited, uh, them for last year or years prior?
No, sir.
Should we?
That's a decision you as a board, uh, can make.
Ms. Carmona, I'm sorry, President Nahara?
Mr. Genna?
Ms. Carmona, what made you do this audit in the first place?
It's part of my audit, uh, plan, and it actually was supposed to happen last year. I just didn't get a chance to, and so I made it a priority to begin this audit, uh, at the beginning of this school year. Uh, and the, the way I determine what to audit is based on risk. Uh, graduation rates are increasing, that's a risk. Attendance rates are increasing, that's a risk. Um, expenditures for, um, academic programs, uh, are high, so audit the usage of those reports. So it's basically acting on your behalf to ensure that what is happening is happening as the management reports.
This, this being a board workshop, and I, Ms. Carmona, correct, if I'm wrong, I believe we're the only one that passed with has a curriculum auditor. EPSD, SLEDA, they, they don't have a curriculum auditor, is that correct?
To my understanding, uh, we are the only district that has an internal auditor for curriculum.
So twenty-nine students, you're right. I agree with Ms. Carmona, as in the board up here, that shouldn't happen. But I know we're, we're gonna put some systems in place, corrective action plan to correct that. Now, if it does happen next year, yes, and then obviously we'll be upset again, and they'll get, we'll be, we'll be more upset, I guess, next year. But I'm sure we're gonna put some actions in place. As far as doing an audit the next two years, Mr. Garcia, we are gonna find some mistakes. I think if we go back the next five years, I think we should, we move forward from here on, correct our mistakes, look over the corrective action plan, see what we need to do to fix them. Obviously, we're hiring some LOC clerks. That's gonna be a huge help. And we move forward. We have to clear up the twenty-nine students. Obviously, that, that's unacceptable, but I believe from this day forward, we move forward.
Mr. G, Mr. Genna, so you're saying you don't want, although there was thirty anomalies, thirty mistakes, you do not want to see what happened in the years prior under the current principal administration? Is that what you're saying?
Mr. Garcia, what I'm saying is under whichever principal we look at, we are gonna have some mistakes.
And you don't wanna catch them?
Not that I wanna catch them, sir. I'm not saying that at all. We will find mistakes.
So you don't want them to surface?
I, no, sir, not that at all. What I'm, what I'm.
I'm trying to understand your perspective.
Well, if you listen to it, let me explain, Mr. Garcia. What I'm saying is that we will find some mistakes. I'm saying from today forward, we move forward and we clear up what we get now.
Mr. Garcia, you're gonna need to let him finish his statement before you speak.
So we will find mistakes in the past, I'm sure we will, and I mentioned that to you. I'm sure we will. We're not here to, to pick a certain high school, a certain principal. We are gonna find mistakes in these various high schools. We know that for a fact. I'm sure we will. Hopefully, we won't. I'm sure we might find some mistakes, but I believe, I believe today we move forward. And we, we do a corrective action plan and move forward from, from there. That's what I'm saying, Mr. Garcia. I'm not trying to cover up nothing, nothing at all, sir.
Thank you, sir. I think we owe it to the students, to the community, to the stakeholders, to do an audit at Socorro High School, to see if there were any other anomalies, mistakes, human errors, whatever you wanna call them, to ensure that, at least give those students a peace of mind.
Well, I believe as a board workshop, the board has to work on that, and we're gonna pick, if the board decides that, that's correct. If we're gonna do one high school, I believe we should do all of them, and not just, just say one high school only.
Well, I think when you have anomalies, where you have thirty errors compared to one, two, it's pretty blatant, sir.
President Nahara, if I may.
I'm sorry, Dr. President.
I apologize, one more time. And just to understand, um, Ms. Carmona is the board auditor. She answers to the board, the board president. Um, that's who she belongs to. She belongs to us. And we, as a board, ask her to audit, here's what she, you know, will do, or she'll do things on her own. Um, again, I, and I'll be honest, Mr. Garcia, um, we, it was luck. Honestly, it was luck that she did that audit and, and found it. Do I think we'd find more? Honestly, I do. Um, would we do more harm than good by going back there? I don't know. I mean, it's one of those risky situations. I think we would, like I said, it's, it's, it's one of those things that we, it could go either way. And I don't know if, if, if it's a good idea or a bad idea to, to go back and audit. I, I, I know, I know. It's, it's one of those things that, you know, you, you're here and you, and I'm not saying it's not something that I wouldn't consider. I have contemplated on that I think we should really know what's been going on. Because, again, it's one of those things when we stand up there and we, you know, hear our principals say, okay, this is, you know, we do that whole, um, we're, as board members, we're, you know, taking on blank faith that they're telling us the truth. Um, can mistakes be made? Yes. I honestly say that we fix this, and we fix it. I, I, I don't, I, like I said, I've, you know, I hate when I have to talk to some people from a neighboring district because I really don't like doing that. And just, they don't know anything about it. I just ask what, what they do, you know, having to do with their students. I mean, they basically told me till the very last days, to even to graduation, they're, you know, checking and everything to make sure that people that are supposed to graduate, graduate, and the ones that are not supposed to, they don't. Um, my problem with this issue is that there was, yeah, there was mistakes, but there was too many mistakes not to be caught. Not to be caught. And that puts us at a lot of risk. A lot, a lot of risk. Um, again, I'm up to with the board decides.
I do have a question. Um, sorry, Ms. Nahara.
Mr. Garcia?
Does this, two questions. You might wanna, uh, Dr. Espinoza might wanna chime in. Does this impact our A rating at all, one? Or does this impact our, anything with financial? I mean, because students graduated and we got money for that? I don't know.
State, state reporting, uh, does affect accreditation. It, it does pose a risk if it continues. Um, so it's going to be, and, and, and I'm gonna go back to Mr. Minna's question, are we okay? It's going to depend on the district following the recommendations of, of the state when they, when they made a call, and making sure that that corrective action plan is implemented with fidelity and is monitored regularly. And, uh, those systems are in place so that it doesn't happen again.
I have a question.
Mr. Minna?
No, I got elected May fourth, and it was a tough campaign. It really was. Um, and I took an oath. I took an oath of office. And, um, on my campaign to, it was integrity, transparency, and, and, and honesty. You know, that's, those are the three items that I ran on. And I believe that we need to be transparent. And I feel guilty that I gave a student a diploma that didn't deserve it. And I'm sorry to say that. But these twenty-nine students that shouldn't have graduated, I am totally, I'm appalled. That should've never happened. Should've never happened, and I'm sorry for saying this, but are we okay, Ms. Carmona?
And again, sir, it's gonna depend on the fidelity to that cap and the systems that we put in place and following the recommendations of, uh, TEA.
Thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez?
President Nahara, um, just for, for the sake of clarity, um, and I know, uh, Ms. Groce and Ms. Carmona, we talked about this in, in CNI committee. The, the majority of the students were due to LOC, loss of credit. Ms. Groce, can you explain what loss of credit means and what, why this is?
I can explain.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Carmona.
The state requires that students are in attendance ninety percent of the time for any partial class or an entire, uh, day. It applies for K-12. So once the attendance falls below ninety percent, the students must recover the time in order to be considered for promotion, be it. the time in order to be considered for promotion, be it going from fourth to fifth grade or for graduation. If a student loses credit in a course that is required for graduation, the student either has to retake it or follow the hours because they don't recover it minute to minute, they recover seventy-five percent of the time. For, for an hour, it, it'll be forty-five minutes. So once they are able to do that, they have to have academic coursework to complete that loss of credit. A certified teacher has to sign off for that, for it. It becomes a legal binding document that becomes part of the student's permanent record. So if a student falls below seventy-five percent, then that goes to what is called the attendance committee. And there are certain circumstances that a student or the committee can take into consideration to grant credit or waive the credit. But the extenuating circumstances fall under what the board has already approved and that is in policy. Does that answer your question?
That does. Now, one of the other conversations, one of the other discussions we had, and this is something that in, in CNI, we're always looking at our graduates, our, our students who are at risk of not graduating in the four years. That's something that this board has always looked at, we've discussed at CNI. We're always looking at, okay, what's, you know, why aren't these kids graduating on time? And I know one of the conversations that we've had, especially with our students who are missing credits because of, of attendance or are under loss of credit. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, most of the discussions we've had, these students are passing their classes.
Yes.
They, they, for all intents and purposes, they, if they would've been in class, they would've received credit. So it's just the attendance piece of it.
That is correct.
One of the things that, as we're looking at our corrective action, I really think we need to monitor also our students, not just, and, and I know we've discussed, you know, not carrying over loss of credit activities year after year after year, but what are we doing especially at senior year for those students that are falling under that ninety percent attendance threshold? There was another conversation that we had in looking at other districts. And if I'm not mistaken, some of the districts don't have to follow this. Ms. Cruzé, can you share a little bit of information with us or, or Ms. Carmona?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
So what we have, what we have is, we have districts who have decided to go and be a district of innovation in order for LOC or loss of credit not to be accounting factor for their accountability. We're not a district that practices that. What we're doing now and we have been doing is we have paired our counselors to work with their paired administrator. We're calling them their spouse. And they are working together to monitor those seniors. We do an at-risk report that we provide you starting about now, in, in January, after the, the second report, where we look at those students that are falling behind, whether it is credits or attendance. We do both. And what we're doing now is that we are having the AP and the counselor work together. Because we, what we did before is the counselor was the one meeting with the kids and telling the kids, you need to do this. You need to, you know, go to LOC hours, you need to come on Saturday, you need to do this. But the authority of the counselor isn't fully there because they see them as someone that protects them, someone that guides them, someone that's there to support them. So we added the assistant principal in place so that they can have a tougher conversation with the students and let them know that they need to do this. We also set timelines prior to graduation. By the end of March, all students who are seniors must complete all LOC contracts prior to the spring contract. So anything they had from the fall, anything they had from years past must be completed by March. If it's not completed, then we are having meetings with the parents to have a deeper conversation as to your child may not be allowed to walk due to loss of credit. That's part of the plan.
So these districts of innovation that don't include loss of credit, do those students, I mean, the attendance, the ninety percent doesn't matter?
It doesn't apply and they walk for graduation.
Okay. Wow. Thank you.
Wow. Several years ago, this board and Dr. Espinoza decided to hire a curriculum and instruction auditor for this very purpose. You know, we have Mr. San Miguel as our financial auditor to check our systems, to make sure that we're doing things right. And this is Ms. Carmona's role. And Ms. Carmona, you have done an absolutely amazing job with a lot of obstacles put in your way. And we appreciate it, but this is, this is why we audit. There have been some massive mistakes. There is, there is sloppy work. And there are procedures that need to be put in place to ensure that this doesn't happen anymore. Honestly, like I said, this is why we audit. This is why this board and Dr. Espinoza made the decision to hire a curriculum auditor so that we could catch these things, fix them, and move on. I appreciate everyone's hard work, Ms. Miranda, Ms. Cruzé. And there's still a lot more to come. And, and so we move on, we fix it, we make sure it doesn't happen again, and we move on.
Dr. Espinoza?
Yes, President, I thank you, waiting for the discussion so I can give some perspective on this. First of all, I do wanna thank, you know, Ms. Cruzé and, and, and Ms. Miranda and the entire team back at the, at the campuses, because I think they do a heck of a job of keeping track of our graduates. And I'm talking about the assistant principals, the counselors, our amazing teachers. They do a, a, a pretty good job. There's always room for improvement, but just let me say this, that as the, as the superintendent of... First of all, let me ask, Mr. Mena asked like three or four times, Mr. Mena, we're gonna be fine, Mr. Mena. We're gonna be fine, that's a good question, though. Thank you for, for asking, that's the first thing that comes to my mouth, okay? How are we looking? I think we're, we're gonna be fine, Mr. Mena. But as a superintendent, I take any and, and all, all deficiencies found in this or any audit very, very seriously. And I can assure you that the, that the board and the school community that are, that all of these areas are being, being addressed. As it has been mentioned already, a corrective action plan has, has been developed. And as a superintendent, as I said, of this phenomenal, phenomenal school district, it also is my job to give credit where credit is due. And I, and I believe that, that there's a strong possibility, I want people to listen to this carefully, strong possibility that SISD, that we may be the only school district, not only in this great state of Texas, but this country, that has conducted this type of internal audit of this magnitude regarding our review of student transcripts related to graduation requirement. This was a large task, Ms. Carmona would, I think, would, would agree. Therefore, there are two very points that I would like to emphasize and I would like to, to make right now. Number one, Senator José Rodríguez, okay, once said in a, in a news article that SISD was a model district for requesting an audit on our student transcripts during the aftermath of the EPISD scandal. Senator Rodríguez, he urged all other districts in the state of Texas to follow the standard set by Socorro ISD. Now, some people may not be familiar with that situation, so I'll take a, a few minutes and, and I'll be brief to, wanna elaborate. You know, when I was hired as a new superintendent here in Socorro, I reviewed our, our policies and procedures that, that we had in place. And as a result, as I think I walked in right now, I had stepped out to, to the back, I think it was Nahara was, was touching on it, that a result of my observation and our, our team effort, you know, we, I recommended to the board during the early part of my tenure here in Socorro that we conduct an external audit on certain policies and certain procedures that were in place. And our board approved the audit which was conducted by Dr. Pam Padilla, okay? And after Dr. Padilla's audit found some major concerns, an additional, additional external audit was conducted. So let me repeat that at my recommendation, as a new superintendent in SISD, our district just didn't conduct one external audit. We conducted two audits to ensure that, that we left no stone unturned in creating standards of, of accountability. Now ladies and gentlemen, that commitment to excellence, a school district board and, and superintendent policies ourselves via, via two audits, is unmatched, unmatched, in my opinion, by any school district in this state of Texas. And Senator Rodríguez and many others, many others, they took note of our high expectations. So to ensure accountability for all, as, as the, the proud superintendent of Socorro ISD, I created, well, we created the position that Martha, Ms. Martha Carmona now holds, an internal, internal auditor of curriculum and instruction. Then I also added the position of academic compliance officer, which is a position that a gentleman, matter of fact, is here, Mr. Corey Kraft now holds. Now, prior to, to my arrival here in Socorro ISD, as, as Ms. Nahara mentioned, again, I walked in, if I'm not setting up our message, we only had one internal, internal auditor position, which is, he's an amazing guy, does a heck of a job, Mr. Joe, Joe San Miguel. Is he, I think he's probably here, there he is, right there, Mr. San Miguel, which has an emphasis on accounting and finance. Now, this position that Mr. Joe San Miguel holds, most school districts hold. As was asked of Mr. Carmona, Ms. Carmona, are you aware of any district that holds an auditor, the, the, the curriculum auditor?
No, sir.
No. Okay, wanna make that clear. We are a transparent school district that we hold it. So again, I said we need to hire and the board agreed, hire another internal auditor. So again, that was not the case before. Therefore, the first point I wanna make is that Socorro ISD is indeed a model district as Senator Rodríguez pointed out, and we proved it again today, today. This high level accountability of our school district is possible only through the support of our, our board members, our trustees, and obviously the hard work of our, of our principals, our forty-nine principals, I said earlier, counselors, teachers, the PMS clerks, who have a lot on their plate. Therefore, I want my first point to be crystal, crystal clear for, for the audience and for everyone, that this audit, first of all, yes, there is concerns, but at the same time, it warrants praise for SISD being a model district and walking our talk of accountability for all. Not every district puts themselves on the line to this degree to ensure the compliance and also accountability. Now, our goal is definitely, I agree, we want a hundred percent. We know, we're definitely gonna go, continue to shoot, shoot for that and make sure that we find areas that we need to improve and then we're gonna address them and knock them out. So now, to my second point. I wanted to listen to this very closely because I think this will put things in perspective. What our, what, what Ms. Carmona didn't mention in her presentation is that she reviewed three thousand five hundred and fifty-six transcripts and only twenty-nine transcripts were not cleared for graduation. Again, and I think we agree, here at the trustees, only how many, Ms. Carmona?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. Veintinueve. Ladies and gentlemen, that means that that is less than one percent. Zero point eight percent, to be exact. In other words, again, less than one percent of students were found not to have met requirements for graduation. Now, let me, let me flip it. That tells me that the clerks at the campuses, the principals, all the team, that ninety-nine percent, noventa y nueve por ciento, of the graduates, according to Ms. Carmona's report, were found to meet graduation requirements. Night, over ninety-nine percent. We want a hundred, I want a hundred, and we're gonna continue to shoot for it. But if comparison groups, if comparison groups, you know how when state results come out and oh, let me see this math scores to compare to, to schools, to these math scores at these schools and these districts? If comparison groups existed, which the manner that TA measures, as I said earlier, as I said right now, academic performance, I'm confident that, that our school district would have one of the highest levels of compliance and accuracy. Again, make no mistake about it, we're definitely concerned that we did not meet our goal of a hundred percent. However, you know, I'm a, I'm an educator who understands the enormity and the importance of that, that task at hand. I've been a counselor, been a teacher, assistant principal, principal and assistant superintendent. And as a superintendent, I have vowed to never, ever forget what it was like to walk in their shoes. Okay, so that is why, you know, I have requested that every comprehensive high school be allotted an extra counselor position. And they, the team, the, the counselors, the PMS clerks, they were so excited when, matter of fact, clap, they started clapping, yes, we need more help. They're gonna get an extra counselor position, as was mentioned earlier, and also an additional clerk to help our team reach one hundred percent. That's our goal. And so we will also upgrade our, our compliance procedures that we have, you know, to continue to set the extremely high standards, you know, that, that we have and continue to be that model for other districts. You know, we're, we're, we're in this together, you know, this is team SISD. As was mentioned earlier with Ms. Miranda, we self-reported our errors to TEA. Ms. Miranda, I'm looking at you right now, who told you to call TEA? I immediately said, Ms. Miranda, let's report that we didn't get a hundred percent, report the twenty-nine students to TEA. And we were told to basically document the findings and have a, have a correction plans, which you heard from, from, from the team. So again, we're, we're in the process of doing exactly that. And again, ninety-nine percent of transcripts were cleared by our, our, our wonderful auditor, Ms. Carmona, which shows you know that we are, we are on track to reach our goal of a one hundred percent accuracy and, and compliance. And I, I just did a little research. This is what I found, what I'm gonna share with you. As I said, not many school districts hold themselves to the standards that we hold. This is basically article found, a school district in Baltimore area, twenty-five percent of the school district called Prince George, pretty big district, twenty-five percent of Prince George High School graduates in audit may not have met requirement. That's because they did that audit. You won't find many audits like this. Another one in my hand, Tennessee, the great state of Tennessee, says a third of its high school graduates didn't meet requirements, a third. And there's one more, but I'll save you, I'll spare you the time, because it is Monday night, right? I'll spare you the time. But as you can see, you know, what, we, we will continue to hold ourselves to that high standard. We want a hundred percent. And our teams back at the campuses, our teams here, we're gonna continue to, to strive. Because you're, you're right, and the, the team has expressed up here, the trustees, that, hey, one is one too many. But hey, we're gonna shoot for a hundred percent. And again, I, I trust the team and where there's some things that need to be tightened up and we're gonna continue to work together as a team to make sure that we move forward. But I just wanted to give some perspective of those percentages and what's happening at, at our campuses. Thank you, President Nahara.
Dr. Spinoza, are there any final questions?
Five percent of Socorro High School graduates shouldn't have graduated. Five percent.
No, sir, it's three, actually.
It's five.
Five?
Mm-hmm.
How, how do you figure that, Mr. Garcia?
That was three percent, unless my math is wrong.
Division.
Unless my math is wrong.
A little division.
But it was all twenty-nine of those students were from Socorro High School, correct?
No, no, no.
Twenty-one.
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 Oh, twenty, no, 21, 29 for the whole district, Mr. Espinoza.
Ms. Carmona, I have a quick question.
Mr. Marles?
We're going to go back to the loss of credit, okay? I know you explained it very eloquently, thank you. The issue I have with that is, we get the loss of credit, we give a kid a chip, I'm looking at all these changed transcripts and we're saying that these children did not meet the attendance requirement. Do you know, Mr. Ressa, I believe we talked about this, about attendance and how we get our funding? I'm a little bit concerned about that, the fact that all these other students, the day we graduated, correct? And you said that there were 274, in fact, Mr. Ganda, I both attest to this, that the 274 students that graduated did not have their transcripts in order, am I correct? To graduate?
Correct.
They were not, they were, so technically, this all should have been done prior to their graduation, am I correct?
That is correct.
By, by counselors, clerks, or the team and so, I have an issue with that. 276, 74 students graduated, yet they had problems with their transcript. So, technically, they weren't, they weren't, they weren't, they didn't meet the requirement for graduation. I believe that's eight, I believe that's 8% of the students, of the 300 and 3,500 students, I believe it's close, 7.8% if I'm not mistaken, that did not meet the requirement the day we, as a board, certified that they were graduates. Am I correct or I'm wrong?
That is correct.
So, they weren't. So, we're not talking about 29, we're talking about 274 students that did not meet the requirement the day they walked. And I believe that the, the statistic or just for the, the percentage, if I'm not mistaken, it's close to 8%. 7.7, 7.8% if I'm not mistaken. So, that, that's not acceptable, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know how we're justifying 29 students not meeting the requirement, we had 274 students. And also, the loss of credit, attendance, reported, reporting them in school that they were there 90% of the time? We're, we're in violation about reporting.
No, no, that is, that is something different.
Okay, but doesn't the loss of credit have to do with attendance?
The state requires for the students to be in attendance 90% of the time.
Correct. And we get, we get funding for those students to be in class?
The way the funding works, it's for the daily average attendance. So, as, every day, the students are accounted for.
If they're absent?
If they're absent, they should be counted absent, okay? Now, we're, we're talking about two different reports. One, one is the 90% compulsory attendance.
Got you.
Which measures or collects the amount of time that the students are in the classroom. It has nothing to do with the funding. What, what is, I guess, something that we do need to be very careful is the data that is reported to the state in PMS. As it was stated in the report, the students were reported in the summer PMS submission as not having completed the courses due to loss of credit or not having the credit. So, once they started making these corrections, that was contradicting the report that was submitted in PMS. That's what we need to be the most careful with because of the data integrity.
And they were authorized by, I believe, person's name was Justin John authorized them to change these transcripts or these graduation plans?
My understanding is they reached out to him for guidance.
Oh, guidance.
There has not been an official report.
I'm sorry, repeat?
They reached out to him, if I understood Ms. Miranda correctly, they reached out to him for guidance and to answer questions, but an official report with a ticket has not been made and that's what Ms. Miranda stated earlier.
I believe Dr. Espinoza directed you to call the TEA, but it was just to get information, correct? Just, just to get guidance, just to get guidance. And since then, since back then in July, I believe, when did you call the TEA, Ms. Miranda? I'm sorry. When was this?
Must have been like January?
January of this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, January 2020, I mean, 2020?
Yes.
So, this discrepancy took place back in the summer, July the 18th is when the final submission was done, but we didn't contact the TEA till July? I'm sorry, till January 2020?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes. And the reason is, is because students graduate in May of 2019, however, we do not report graduates until the following school year. So, we don't actually report them to the state until the snapshot. So, we have until January to actually report our graduates.
Was there not another deadline in October, according to what I read? There was another deadline in October?
In October, it's the snapshot date.
Snapshot.
So, they just kind of take a picture of our data for that day and we have a couple months to actually make sure that what we're reporting is correct.
So, we got, we got guidance from this gentleman?
Yes.
To tell us that you have to put some interventions in place?
Correct. To go ahead and start working on a corrective action plan.
And we're looking to hire new, a new, what is it?
Yes.
Compliance officer, counselors, but this is after the fact, all this should have been taken care of prior to graduation.
Right.
That's my concern, that this should have all been taken care of. Counselors should have oversaw these data, these graduation plans. I know the port, the principals were kind of put in a position that had I been a principal and my assistant superintendent would tell me that, to blame them, I would be very, very upset. Very, I think we should, all should be accountable, very much accountable from the, the counselor that, that's in charge of all the counselors, that had all these discrepancies. I think you, as in the individuals, should have taken measurements to make sure that all these students met the requirements, which they didn't. So, that's, that's the issue here, that's the issue, not the 29, Dr. Espinoza, 274.
Are there any other questions?
Can I go stress eat now, please?
If there's no further questions, Ms. Carmona, again, thank you so very much. I'm sure we will be discussing this further, but thank you so much for your diligence and again, we're going to fix these things and move forward. Administration will be working on the corrective action plan and we will move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carmona. If there's no further business before this board, we are adjourned, the time is 8:26.